It's just getting started.
The problem is, is that, you know, that's what they say about winter and then it seems to take forever.
It takes forever, right? Hi, how are you?
How are you?
That's good.
Hey, David.
Hey, Martin, how are you?
Good, good, how are you?
Not too shabby. You got a chair in the way today, Martin, we gotta straighten out a bit.
Yeah, good, he said that you'd seen you guys over here, right?
We tomorrow, please, work hours, if you want me to. I'm being awful good.
Des, can we get that door unlocked? Yeah, just sorry, I was returning the thought. Uh, no, I didn't, no, I never got a chance to go there. Okay. Okay. All right.
Did she give you a time?
Yeah, service, we can provision, I am. As Thursday.
No, I was saying, did she give you a time? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
Ah, it's actually been really good. I was doing better than I thought. I ended up doing, I think, called peptide therapy, so I've been doing this.
Okay.
And I would say. Technically, by like the my surgeon's protocol, I should not be doing anything over twenty five. But I, I'm back here at gym and I'm doing quite a bit over twenty five. And I feel great, so I think it's related to the peptide.
That apparently new.
Somebody, it is, oh, there's like thousands of peptides out there, and this one is called like. I think it's called BT fifty or BTS. So what I have to do is add to it, actually, in the shoulders, there's one, one day, one on Wednesday. And I started that, I wanna say six weeks post-surgery, so I've been doing that for about eight weeks now. And it feels great.
I'm the little league team going.
This last game.
I miss my, uh, my youngest son's class. Even with salational. Bird during playoffs. I flew. All the way to all.
So. Thanks, I'm very rare.
Oh, nice. What position does he play? Always got stuck on first or third because of his color. You know what I mean, I just didn't have the range. How is trouble?
I, that hasn't been extracted.
Uh, no. I, I have, I think I have a full chart unless we go for it.
If I say one thing, you forgot something.
George shouldn't be here.
I get, I get power on you.
Or the main around three block, he says that stuff. Three, three, okay.
Ready, at seven P M, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, please stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May you be doing that. Roll call, please, Jessica.
Lassiter, Nemechek.
Here.
Farrell.
Here.
Moody.
Eric.
Richard.
Here.
There's a form present.
I'll make a motion to excuse the absence of, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Lassiter.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post a name. Ready, moving on to. Uh, agenda item number three, interim city manager, John Matthews, introduction. Obviously, this is John Matthews, he's the new interim city manager, John, I'm gonna give you the floor and just allow you to speak.
Good evening, everyone. So as he said, my name is John Matthews, I have, uh, been a Michigan resident since two thousand and three. Uh, I was recruited up here from Miami, and then in February, I realized it's cold up here sometimes. Uh, but it's beautiful country, it is absolutely stunning country, and, um. While I have about two years of municipal experience, I do have experience in the professional and my background in manufacturing international business. So what I'm hoping to do and what I will work tirelessly to do is to, uh, be a productive teammate for the village team. And do everything I can to help the city, uh, move forward and continue the progress that this, uh, your beautiful community has before it. But thank you very much for having me.
Um, so I had a luxury meeting with John for the first time, I think it was last week, Thursday, uh, I came into City Hall, met with John, had a conversation with him. I met, had a luxury meeting with him again this week, so I've met John twice now since he's been in the city for a week. Um, we've spent more than a couple hours together at this point in time, having conversations. So far, I'm really impressed with the conversations I've had with John and hope that it's a good fit and continue to move forward. Um, any, any other commissioner, like an opportunity to go, a comment, say anything?
Just welcome and happy to have you here, John, again, as Mayor said, you know, it was a great couple hours speaking with you. And look forward to, uh, continuing on and moving things forward and, uh, getting some things, uh, cleaned up and back on track here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Alrighty, I'm gonna move us along then to agenda item number four, the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any items on the consent agenda be removed and placed as a last item under new business to receive full discussion. Such requests will automatically be respected. Is there any request from the public? Any requests from the staff? Any requests from the city commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Richard.
Just a quick point of, um, in the meeting packet for anybody that was confused, there's no, there's confusion between exhibits C and D. It spoke to a special meeting on the twenty ninth and then a closed meeting on the twenty ninth. And then a regular meeting on the twenty ninth and between C and D, we actually only held the closed meeting, so if that confused you, um, it stumbled me for a minute. So beyond that, that was it.
Alrighty, with that being said, I'll just make a motion to approve the consent agenda that's presented then. Support, uh, for the discussion, roll call, please, Jessica.
Farrell.
Aye.
Moody.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Nemechek.
Aye.
The motion's carried.
Already moving on to agenda item number five, public comment. This is the moment and opportunity when anyone in the public can come up to the podium, state their name and address and make public comment on any non-agenda items. He asked that you limit yourself to five minutes or less, the city clerk, Jessica, will be taking time. When the timer goes off, I'll just add that ask that you wrap up and conclude without cutting you off directly. Thank you. There's one for each. Okay.
Is there one for the conference as well?
Pretty.
There's one for the conference as well.
Um, there can be, I don't, I, I don't know if it was there.
Okay.
Should be, I guess.
Save one for Joey. And save one for you. He may make it.
And before, it's different.
Harry.
Karen.
Harry.
Harry. Is this, are you, do you have public comments in the yards to the arena?
Well, our agenda topic isn't weightless. And I have.
Okay. Okay. I wouldn't add, I think it would be more appropriate if you brought it up under that agenda item instead of right now, since this isn't an agenda topic.
Is it gonna be an avatar? I mean, if it's after, it's kind of useless.
No, I'll, I'll open up to the public before we actually go to that delivery. Um, yeah, I'm gonna sit down. But if you had any other comment outside of the marina, feel free to go. So if there's no more public comment, okay.
Gal Littenberger, four thirteen Pearl, um, here on behalf of the Lake Shore Boy Association, uh, to really to give thanks, um. To the council and particularly to Doug Barney and his folks for all the help with the, uh, with the new reconstruction of the Shore Room Gardens. And so Tom, uh, we had a little powwow Friday, excuse me, down there. And, uh, Tom just wanted to express his thanks and especially, we had a, a little snack food, trying to get it started with the, uh. Irrigation and, and I know Doug and Darcy were really super responsive, so, uh, he just wanted, uh, Tom wanted to express his thanks to everyone. Uh, I'm also here on my home, uh, representing myself, uh, to offer, uh, myself, uh, and this, uh. Our first municipal, our first, um, to prune the, the willow tree, um, that was on at the last meeting, I know, um. Doug's preference was to remove it, which I totally, we worked together a lot, I totally understand his reasons and, uh, you know, public safety, of course, is important. Uh, one of the things I do, uh, for a living, uh, for cities is, uh, risk assessment of trees and. After looking at that, I feel that I could prune it, uh, to make it safe and that we could extend the life of it, um. People had expressed to me, they, you know, they thought I was behind wanting it removed, you know, which I wasn't at all, um. I would advocate for pruning it aggressively, uh, it would look, um. A little homely, you know, to say the least, I know, I, I watched the, the video of the, the meeting and I, I know Commissioner Moody had an experience where it, it's good, it would look bad for a period of time, just because. There's so, in order to make it safe, there's an awful lot of material that would have to come out, you know, that, so it's not falling. Um, but I think a year from now, we could look at it and say, you know, it's great, and then at that time evaluate it, but we could extend the life. Um, nine years ago, we, you know, there was controversy over whether to save it or, uh. Remove it and, and Mike Kane had called upon me and he, you know, he trusted my judgment and we, we saved it and, um. You know, it's, it's been a good thing, I think a lot of people, uh, liked the tree, I, I was willing to, you know, completely to accept. Doug's concerns about safety and not say anything, and then after the meeting. People came forward, you know, particularly, uh, Dan Duncan and, uh, Dan Engelhardt, they both. Apparently feel as I do about the tree and, and they, between the two of them, you know. Said, what could we do constructively and just saying, hey, Doug, you figured it out, you know, so, uh, it, it prompted me to want to bear the expense. Of hiring a climber that I worked with, um, and then, uh, having him work alongside myself to, to make it safe and then. We're not asking for anything as far as debris removal, that I didn't know exactly, there was talk if the stump came out, perhaps DPW do some of that, I'm. I, I'm not asking for help of any kind, you know, I would, any expenses associated with the, with the care of that tree, I, I would, I would do and, and then, uh. Uh, propose to come back and look at it in a year and, you know, see if it's, if, if it's still safe. Um, but one of the, one of the credentials that I maintain is, is this inspection credential that's, it's provided me a chance to work in the winter. For larger cities doing, you know, we don't, obviously, we're more informal here and don't require that, but there's. There's a process to that, you know, in, in making those evaluations and, and I would tell you that we have other trees, you know, around the pavilion area that have, you know, dead. Limbs and so forth that would concern me a lot more than the well, you know, and, and so I'm not saying don't spend money, I'm just saying, don't spend it in the well. So. That's all, and as I say, I, I know it's not on the agenda, uh, but I did understand there's a, a time constraint, you know, before the fourth, obviously, and, and before I made this offer. I consulted my friend, uh, that, that is in the business of climbing and, and that's. If that were something that you would consider, that we would, we would meet your deadline, you know, before the, obviously, before the fourth. So.
Alrighty, well, thank you, Gal, I appreciate you having the courage to come up and after that, um, with, uh, the decision that was made at the last meeting. It puts me in a unique position, I don't want the commission to feel like I'm pushing back on a decision that they made at a meeting without my attendance and a consensus, so I'll just ask that. Commission if they would like to reconsider the motion that was made last week. And get their thoughts on it, and then that will provide you with some clarity and direction on what the commission would like to do, and then we're gonna move on, okay?
Sure.
Um, so, commission. You heard the proposal, the offer that's being presented, um, would you like to consider that proposal that's being offered by Gal? Or would you like just to, uh, stick with the decision that was made last week?
Yeah, I, I respect you a lot, Gal, I respect everything you said, but I, I think that, uh, this puts us, the city, in such a, um. I, i- in such a position that if we sit there and turn back now. That if something happens with that tree, we are totally liable for anything and. And, uh, you know, if this could have been, if this conversation could have gone down a different way, possibly, but the other thing is. I, and I think, you know, you said you listened to the meeting and I think, uh, Doug did good by you saying, you know, using, using your words, showing the pictures, there was. Doug did good by you saying, you know, using, using your words, showing the pictures. There was. For everybody in present here, there was a four foot rod that the man put all the way through the tree. So the, the, the tree isn't safe. I respect Gao's saying that, you know, he thinks he might be able to buy it a few more years. I guess my view on it too, and now that there, there is no turning back in my mind, because we would, if, when it falls on someone, we're gonna. We're gonna lose the keys to the city. It's gonna be like, here you go, because the insurance company's gonna walk away and go, oh no, you already, we're on record. Saying that, you know, this tree is a direct hazard and, and showing the rod broad and everything like that. I'd rather, I'd rather be proactive and, you know, if, if all, you know, even in your words last meeting and your words here. Buy it a couple more years, you know, maybe up to five. In five years, we could have a, a, you know. We can have a brand new tree there this fall. And in five years, we could have a brand new tree, you know, filling up that space. Then is the way that I see it, but I, I respect you a lot, but there's, this is one that there's no turning back. I don't think. Not, not without putting this city at direct risk. So, appreciate it.
Commissioner.
Um, I guess. First and foremost, I'm, I'm kind of gonna object to the procedure at the moment. Typically, we do not engage in discussions and rescinding uh, to public comment, we listen. Um, I would support. Um, adding it as an agenda item uh, in either old business to be. For a motion to rescind.
That's what I'm looking for.
Well, but not at this time. But.
Why? And we would need a super majority to rescind any.
Well, I'm just gonna stand then. Our procedures, public comment, we listen and then move on. And if it's an agenda item. Um, to be discussed later on in the meeting and I'm happy to win it.
Okay, so I think what she's saying is she's not considering the request that you're.
I understand. No, I'm not. She, I'm just gonna make it a point of order on procedure, public com- it's public comment. Without discussion by us to go down, take up a, a motion to rescind. That's all. I'm not leaning in one way or another.
I don't want us to spend money we don't have to spend, but I don't wanna place the city at risk either. And I, I think Commissioner Pritchard's correct that we need to bring this up as an agenda item, agree that it is an agenda item. And then revisit the decision uh, aside from this communication or this discussion, so.
Yep, so in order for this to be an agenda topic in the future, what I just did had to actually happen. As of right now, administration has been given the authority to move forward with that removal of that tree. So tomorrow they could legitimately cut down that tree. So Gal, it doesn't seem like we have support on this commission for figuring out a clear direction on what they would like to do, so.
I understand.
If there's an opportunity for it to become a future agenda topic, hopefully that opportunity comes to reality. Hopefully it happens before the tree comes down.
Yeah, my offer stands. I mean, if, if for some reason um. You will decide that, that that's something you wanna accept. It's, it's not, I'm not limiting the opportunity tonight by any means. I was just. Uh, bringing it up because of the timing this was the fourth and so sort of trying to get.
Thank you for the offer. Appreciate it.
Yeah, if it comes a good, if it can happen, I'm, I'm all for it.
Yep. Anyone else have anything for public comment?
Mayor, it would not be unusual to amend an agenda and add an item later on. To be properly discussed, and that's basically what I'm proposing. So, we want a motion, make a motion to move this. At the bottom of the agenda or into old business, whichever place it's appropriate. I don't pretend to know where it's correctly and continue my. Because there is a time when this element to it and it would be reasonable to do.
Okay, so did you wanna make a motion then to?
Motion to amend the agenda to add the discussion of the tree, willow tree removal.
Okay.
The end of the agenda.
Perfect. I support that motion. Is there further discussion? Roll call please, Jessica.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Nemechek.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
The motion's carried.
Alrighty, moving on. Anyone else have anything for public comment?
Or even what you may.
Sinnebees.
And uh, yeah.
Okay.
Please.
Jeff, what's the town to? Respectfully, I'd like to um. Make a comment about a, what I consider to be a non-agenda item, even though it does reference the marina. And I think it's appropriate to make that comment at this time. Because the agenda says we're gonna talk about the waitlist later on. They do have a comment about the waitlist, but they have other. Comments that have nothing to do with the waitlist that have the marine. And I think that Mrs. Strillman, they had the exact same. I am experiencing wanted to make some comments that pertain not only to, or, or not specifically about the waitlist. I think it is appropriate to, to have that discussion at this time, but it's there need.
Yeah, Jeff, I was just going off from she start, she handed out the state funded marinas in northern Michigan and a compare comparable. Data set of Point City, Charlotte, Boise, Jordan, Potaski, Harbor Springs, Alcatraz, Northport, Sons, Bay, Mackinac City, Elmwood. So that's what sparked my curiosity of the comments she had revolved around the handout and the material she was presenting to the commission. Cause this material goes directly to the comparable metrics that we have in the agenda topic that we'll be discussing.
Okay.
So, I'm one hundred percent willing to listen to any comments on the marina outside of the waitlist conversation.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so my, my comments are, are gonna start like this. Um, I think there's gonna divide or a wedge thrown in between some people that are, that are actually kind of supporters of the marina and. People that seemed like they weren't really supporters of the marina or, or supporters of. Some of the proposed things for the marina. And I, and I really don't think that that's necessary, I think. Um, and I was here um, when we first started talking about the marina, when they started talking about the big, huge. You know, new marina that was, you know, a possibility. Um, a lot of people came in and made comments and, and a lot of the comments were. Um, hey, we've got a marina, but we don't take care of it. Why don't we just take care of the marina we have? And I feel the same way. I think we have a marina. Um, I don't wanna see it getting to be taken care of, so. Um, I don't like to see that wedge between people that are possibly supporters of the marina and people that are, that aren't supporters of the marina. I do think that can, that something that contributes to that wedge is misinformation that comes. Actually from this table and it's um, there's been a couple of things that have come out. Uh, one of the things recently came out was that we have the lowest. Price marina, lowest cost marina in the, in the state, and that is absolutely false. Um, and there's lots of information out there to back that up. So, you know, I think that when, when you've got people that are wondering or, or, or thinking about the marina or trying to. Minimize the cost of the marina or maybe don't support the marina at all. I think those kind of things are, are detrimental to. The overall goal of, hey, let's fix up what we have. And to do that, because, yeah, there's gotta be some money spent. I understand that. Um, there was also comments made that um, that the marina's. Is, you know, basically for wealthy people. Um, there were several comments to that. And that the residents can't use it. And that was said at the last meeting that I attended, that. And, and that's absolutely false. The residents have the same ability to use the marina as, as any of the other boats. You may, when you're talking about seasonal, then we get into the waitlist and all that, I have comments about that later, but. Um, that may be accurate. There may be some slips that are unavailable, but. Uh, residents, non-residents, anybody, it's a public marina and anybody can use it. So I, I hate to see those comments. Being said from this table and they don't get correct. And it goes out to. The community and there's a lot of people that. Trust you guys, believe what you say, and then it doesn't get corrected. And so I, I hope that some of those, some of those kind of things can get corrected. We can get correct information out to the public and then let everybody see what's, you know. What the intentions are. Let's fix up the marina that we have, make it a good marina. And, you know, I'm willing to support that. And that's, that's what I heard from a lot of people early on in this whole process. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. I'd like to go over some of the information that I gave you. Sorry, my name is Carrie Strillman. One nine one East Crozier Road, Boyne City. I will not talk about the waitlist. Is that right?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just, that's why I came and asked and came with this to ask if you were gonna talk about the waitlist.
I'll skip that.
Know if you were aware that it was an agenda topic and that we wouldn't be talking about in about forty, forty to thirty minutes.
Okay. What I wanna talk about is some of the comments that were made at a recent meeting in May. And Jeff did allude to some of the things that also I would like to discuss. Um, a comment was made by two city commissioners that our rates are the cheapest by far in the state. We are state funded marina. It can't be compared to private marinas. There's a state fee system and it has ten tiers. Ten being the lowest rates, one being the highest. Boyne City is at tier one plus. So as you can see from the chart that I've given you, we're tier one plus. There are sixty nine state funded marinas in Michigan and we are in the top ten percent. So. As you can see, we are not, we are by far not the cheapest marine in, in Michigan. Uh, it was stated that rates haven't changed for fifteen years. I attended the waterways commission meeting last week and I did ask that question and the rates have, have been increased. Two or three times in the last fifteen years. And also Boyne City has gone from a lower tier, or I should say a higher tier. To tier one in the, in that fifteen year timeframe. Um, it was also stated that a lot do a lottery. As you can see from your list, we have corresponded with. Nine other marinas in northern Michigan, speaking with the harbor masters. And not one of them in our local area of northern Michigan do a lottery. Um, it was also brought up that we should consider time limits. Um, again, all of those, those have no term limits. Uh, many comments were made about residents versus non-residents. Non-residents should pay more. City residents should get preferential treatment. We should have residents and non-resident fees. But in fact, we are a state funded marina. We need to follow the contract that says state and local residents. Share the same responsibility or the same benefits of our marina. Also, it was stated that because Boeing Thunder pays three hundred and fifty dollars to ask the seasonal. Um, people to leave, that that effectively reduces our seasonal rate. But in fact, many of the boaters that go to or that have to leave for Boeing Thunder. Spend far more than three hundred and fifty dollars in fuel and slip fees to go to another marina. Um, also, I would like to say that Jason and Kurt are here from the DNR. And maybe during this time or the waitlist time, they would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for uh, public comment? Alrighty, I'm gonna close public comment at this time. And save this for the waitlist conversation. Alrighty, moving on to agenda item number six correspondence. Um, in our packet, there was an email from Deborah that I wanted to touch on, because there was, in this email, there's two questions. I guess they spoke at the last city commission meeting under public comment and they look at the clarification on. Do we have the full go ahead to continue with the races, question mark? And they're looking for clarity on if the city commission will. Allow a naming of the memorial drag races to be Randy Howard. Um, how would the commission feel most appropriately in proceeding and providing this resident with some direction and clarity? Would we like to do that now or make a motion to have this become an agenda topic? Either at the end of this meeting or in a future meeting?
I wasn't aware that we needed to approve moving forward because I thought it was an established event. Correct me if I'm wrong, Jessica or John. Um, is this item on the schedule for? The, uh, the airport?
There is some question as to who will lead this. Um, it's my understanding that it used to be something that was done by the police department as a fundraiser. Um, and then when they stopped doing it, Mike took it over. And right now, they don't.
Was it through the service club that it was taken over?
I know that there's volunteers that helped them, but Mike was the one who always led it. Um, and I don't know if there's any staff member that would be willing to give up their, they've got a weekend for years to come and also have the ability to lead. Something like that.
Okay.
Um, so it is something we could probably talk about and follow up with in our next meeting to see if there's anybody. Who would be willing to do that or could do that and get that sort of response. But there's nobody that comes to mind right at this moment.
Okay. I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, I share her concerns and I appreciate you bringing those up and it would. I would think that we need to empower them by authorizing them to proceed. And also, I think the request for renaming is um, deserving of a resolution. And I'm not sure who would write that, but it certainly would be a resolution that would make sense. Given the circumstances.
Perfect.
I might suggest determining what all you need to, what all needs to be done to shut down an airport and who has that ability and things like that before you empower. And you, there, there needs to be an understanding of what all goes into this drag race, because you do shut down airport. For a certain period of time.
So this man.
And it's something we can look into. It's just not something that the answers to tonight.
So I'll just make a request that we establish consensus right now with the city commission to task city administration of looking into. Actually performing the Labor Day races, what's that's gonna entail, if they're gonna be able to do that. Um, if they can identify an interested party and being able to do that. And also caveat of reaching out to Lions to see if they wanna do the food that. That they, because I think some of that revenue would help that social organization. So I'd like that is, that established relationship to continue to be there. Um, so we just need to gain a consensus on that. So I would support that.
I would support that with adding the airport board being involved in the uh, decision to close the airport for the time period.
Yeah, they're definitely.
So.
Well, the airport has been the most beneficiary since.
Once we get you in.
Okay.
Once we get you in officially.
Uh, so. What, am I hearing that we're basically making a motion to authorize the city staff to, to, to take the lead? To explore. Um, performance of all of the actions and duties. That go along with the drag races and coordinate with the appropriate parties.
We'll have to find a lead and then we'll follow up with that.
I would say no, that there's not a motion. I'm looking to gain a consensus in giving administration direction on what we'd like to do. It sounded like at one point in time, a commissioner was just recommending moving forward. The input from the city clerk was, whoa, 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 we don't even know if we can do that. We don't even know what that entails. We don't even know if we have someone that's interested in leading that effort. So before we just blindly task them with something, I'm looking for consensus. To task administration to find those answers.
Uh, I would like to hear from the chief for a minute, if we could. I mean, he's been up there every year and he used to be their, their. Um, fundraiser, so.
Right. Uh, so when Chief Harris started this and did run Drag Race, he ran Memorial Day and Labor Day. Um. Which was a problem for the state. So for. Two holidays, this firm was tied up with drag races, which in service maybe very well. So we turned over all the equipment in the airport board and they've been running it ever since um, under. And.
Oh, I'm gonna go, was that you?
Uh, Jeff, that happened shortly after you took over. Yeah, that's had to be. Quite well.
Okay.
Um, neighborhood tennis years. Uh, it is a huge undertaking to get all the. Uh, it is a huge undertaking to get all the we piece of going. Um, make sure they probably have a lot still in place with their volunteers. You just need somebody to spearhead that and know what they're doing. And give you direct. And you're staying under to explore that. If you look at that, it's easy to find. You'll probably have to go reach out to the people that have been running it for the past several years to see if there's anybody still out there willing to do it. Those people are around. We just have to ask questions on who if they want to.
Hmm.
So. Probably bring back to you what we found out. It might be somebody that's been waiting to jump into that spot. There might be somebody that will still do that spot. I don't know. And be proactive to do that. We want to make those phone calls and see if we can find out where you.
Okay, thanks.
So I support it. I think Commissioner Farrell supports it. I'm just looking for another commissioner that supports administration, putting down those answers.
I have no problems with administration looking into it. I just wanted to hear where uh, chief came from.
Perfect. Moving on to B, C, and D. Um, any commissioner comments, questions, or concerns on those items?
Six B.
It's very interesting.
It is a memo proclamation from Jacob regarding uh, the audio recordings and the difficulty to go along with that. Um, I'd like to refer back to his gentle suggestion um, back in March of uh fourteen twenty twenty-five, he I think we can, we can go here and and be okay with not having just, you know, uploading the audio to the city commission website. They have improved our audio capabilities. But he made um some very valid suggestions with regarding to the best practices for live streaming and it includes uh, microphone use, meeting organization, public participation, having people come to the podium. And I think we should consider adopting these because I continue to get complaints that if you can't hear even on the YouTube. Sorry. Did a good job, I think. Lincoln was out. Still that. Though it is confusing. It went to John. It is confusing sometimes when people are looking for coverage. We want to be as transparent and have as great as civic participation as we can. And this is one way to make sure the record's clear.
Anything else?
Wow, I'm going to risk making a motion to adopt these as best practices and that we observe them.
Is there a second?
S- support.
Uh, further discussion, I'm not opposed to it. Um, me, I just would like to uh not get in the habit of just adding things um and just throwing motions out there. That's the only point, the only comment that I want to bring up. Again, I'm not opposed to it. Um, but I just, I don't even the only question I had on this was correspondence question mark because I don't even know will feel like this could be an agenda topic on itself and not just corresponds to the commission. Um, but that's the only comment I got.
Well, the bottom line is there's nothing on this sheet that we don't do. That's, we can't control the microphones. We can't control people speaking into the microphones. Um, you know, we can't can't control the quality of the video. Unfortunately, we tried, we've come light years um from where we were three years ago. Um, and uh, so I guess I I feel positive about that. It's it's a hundred percent better than it was then and still a hundred percent worse than it possibly could be. So I, you know, but as far as the best practices, there isn't anything on here that we don't follow. So
right.
Uh, I appreciate that though, Sammy.
I guess I disagree.
It's a great look back.
That we frequently are taking comments from the audience that may or may not be able to be heard because they're not speaking into the microphone. When they don't require folks to go to the podium. And he's made that point to us.
Well, I just concur, but nine, I I mean, very rarely do we, maybe if he, if uh, there's a question being addressed addressed to just like tonight, the chief spoke. You know, every once in a while, you know, T P W director or something, but other than that, everybody else walks up to the boat. So I I understand what you said. I, so I'll uh I'll agree to do better and say, sorry, even you, chief, need yet. You know, right, so. Um, I have no problem with that. All I was saying was if we we do everything on this on this list, so you know, appreciated the update that Jacob gave us then and and again, until we're ready to upgrade the system again. You know, nothing much is going to change. So I I I respect, I respect the fact that um get the same comments, couldn't hear everything and, you know, loved watching it on there, but I didn't get this person. I didn't get that person. Um, and then they always say, I never have a problem hearing you. So. He got a big mouth.
Anything else? Roll papers, Jessica.
Richard.
Hi.
Nimichek.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Then Moody.
Hi.
The motion's carried.
Uh, any other comments, questions, concerns? Commissioners?
Six C um is referring to the state of Michigan case uh renewable energy plan and I guess I tried looking that up and I don't know what that means to us. It's requesting public comment through uh, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And so I guess at some point it's someone could provide some insight on what what this means to us. Because I don't want to end up in a situation like we did with the dam and missing a window. So basically this document speaks in legal speak. It says that on February twenty seven, an application for approval of a renewable energy plan was filed with the Michigan Public Service Commission to comply with some laws and we are being invited within, it's a notice of opportunity to comment and I I personally don't have any visibility to the plan. I tried quickly to look it up, so any assistance that we could receive either by staff, by any others persons connections, I would be grateful for.
Anything else, commissioners? All right.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and do a summary for that and submit it to the commission on the twenty-fourth.
Okay. Uh, I would jump right onto that that link. Uh, dash point number two, H, the M I dash P S C. Um, that link, it looks like that's where you can access this document. Just type it in here. You can also go right down to seventy-one oh nine West or thirteen twenty-three Boyne Avenue, Boyne City, Michigan, and grab a copy as well. Um, anything else before moving on from correspondence? Anyone from the public have comment questions and concerns on agenda item number six correspondence? All righty, moving on to agenda item number eight. Reports and officers, boards, and standing committees.
Do you want to do the city manager's report?
Oh, yeah.
Now we have one.
All right, John. What was yours?
Yeah, so this being the first one, I tried this, I have a few notes that I've made throughout the five days that I'm compiling. But recognizing that when these are, when this management report is created on a Wednesday, it's almost a week old. So some of these things were were hopeful events and some of them actually were completed, but I like to share as much information as possible. Uh, and be succinct as possible. So if there are questions, then the commission can can bring that forward. Couple of things that did change and I wasn't, by the way, I was not understanding, I attended the Michigan Main Street, I met with Ingrid, uh, the executive director afterwards, and I said, do you typically do it or do I do it? So I I guess I did it on her behalf. Um, I didn't get in trouble for it, so she seemed relatively pleased that I got it out there. Um, the, a couple of things that did come up on here, the splash pad is open. I'll I'll hit the other items and I'll save the big ones for last. There are some issues with it. They found the possibility, there's some broken piping underneath, so it's about seventy-five percent operational. We thought it'd be better to let the kids have fun with what water is coming out as opposed to shutting it down and figuring out if we need to break it open to determine what's going on. So that's going to be ongoing, but we'll review that in the fall when the splash pad closes down and the weather rolls in. Contract to repairing the potholes of Ogleman, those are done. The um apparently it was a little aggressive to get the dust control and dirt roads created. Uh, they got a little backed up, so they advised us that they're going to get it done uh this week, so they'll be back out here for that. Fortunately, as the rain came through, it dampened all the dust. I think this was not an issue right now. Um, the camera, there's actually two cameras out at the site where they, and I toured the site with um with a uh chief state as well and met with the D P W clerk there where people are dropping their sticks and brush. It does have the ability to capture license plates. We have um you know, addressed a couple of concerns that people thought that was their dumping station that were not residents or even filling the trash bin. So it is being effective, it is being modified and and uh superintendent Barney's looking into it and staying on top of that. So thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Uh, on to the the bigger things that was going on. The harbor, uh, the delay in the harbor opening. So Ralph and and Doug and of course Jen and Jessica, we all were talking about, all right, what do we need to do to get it open? I spoke with the inspector regarding the E stops. That was the one thing holding up power to C dock. It was determined, yes, the dock, the harbor could be safely open Tuesday at noon. We went ahead and notified everyone. So people could start bringing their boats in. Um, the E stops are up for consideration in this meeting. And it was also identified that the cleats weren't placed in that any of the slips without it be accomplished as well pending approval from the commissioners on that one. But it is um uh, there are no issues with the harbor being open, the boats are pulling in. I did get an opportunity to go and meet with some of the boaters as well, both at the harbor and then here at the offices. So I I appreciate having that opportunity. But I'm looking forward to having everything moving um cleats in place, electric in place, um, and then the other things that the commissioners can work on moving forward. The other uh, and and with that, I'd like to let the commission know. Um, I typically take the approach, if there's an issue that's limiting on our ability to to complete something and there's question regard either who's culpable or who is responsible for the costs. I like to move forward with it, get it done, and I can assure you that I will look into who's responsible for paying the cleats if it was missed on on the engineering plan as well as the E stops. Because I did confirm from the inspector that this was not a new requirement. This is code for these E stops. And for such, I will look at the engineering firm that the the firm that engineered the electric for the harbor. Uh, they were H E D and once, and I couldn't do anything until I get the approval. And then I look at, and then I'll go after the the parties and have discussions about applying that money back. But I thought it'd be more important to bring it to your attention, submit to your approval and get everything rolling. And then I will keep you updated as the progress in getting that money. Uh, the last thing we're talking about, there was um um, the trees that are on my list here. The engineers are because the electrical lines, utility lines run right along the border that is along the seawall on on the parking lot side and planting the trees has a potential, of course, not this year, next year, but it does have a potential of causing disruption to the electric and some of the other utilities uh services that are under there. There are water lines. So they're they're strongly suggesting that we identify another location for that. If you agree, I'll work with the harbor, I'll work with the D P W and Parks and Rec and see if we can bring solutions of other locations for those trees. What else do we have? That's all. And I'll be attending the planning commission next, next Monday as well. So down that with regards to the master plan and any assistance I can offer.
All right, thanks, sir. Any public comments, questions, or concerns in regards to agenda item number seven, city managers' report? Uh, moving to the commission deliberation, any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay.
Yes, we will be taking up the the various, the cleat, the E stop and the misses. Um, then we have some additional information on that from Aban Marsh that can influence our action and our decision. Um, I understand about the trees. I think it's I didn't believe the water and the conduit were there before, but I have to defer to um like an arborist to say whether or not that makes sense. It was lovely, um, but whether or not it can be, they can be put in. I can tell you that I know a lady on Lincoln Street who lost five trees during the uh the sewer water project that would love to have them planted there. Um, that they were in the right of way. So I got a home thing. Um, the good news on the Charlotte White County appropriation and on the awards. I just rough and dirty because I don't remember. Uh, do you know how much we got for the Little League sign and the road downstairs? I know that it was presented here once before. If you don't, it's no biggie.
Like confounding.
Yeah, it was, we we had the information before, but I just couldn't recall. That's great news. Um, one comment about the splash pad and this may sound odd, but I happened um to be reading about don't take this wrong, brain eating amoeba. We need to do something for sanitation schedule for that water system. Um, to make sure we're not the cause of any infections um that may be distributed. And I don't know what you typically do um in the shutdown, but we certainly need to make sure that that we don't have any bugs in the water.
I'll reach out to Aquatics Instructor because they'll have if there's some sort of spray or wipe down we need to do or just a preventable.
It's more about the pump system. It's more about the closed loop system. Whatever's there. And I do have a question, um, just as a point of general information. Um, what has the increase been in the number of permits that we're getting, we're getting requested for the the um contractors? Do we know? Okay, just a point, just curious. And then there was a a comment about the wifi being knocked out. Um, and the it's it's, is it functional currently? Is this?
Are you asking about?
The deep, I'm sorry, I'm looking at item seven on the report, power outage Wednesday knocks out power for approximately, oh, all of us actually. The disruption created issues with the the wifi, which is being reviewed, reviewed and repaired.
Spectrum made four trips to D P W, replaced hardware.
Nice.
About four different times, three different times for sure. Replace the router, place the modem. Came back. Oh, it's the router. Replace the router. Came back. Oh, it's the motor. Replace. That happened many, many times. It finally works. It worked over the weekend. We're good to go. Uh, in terms of permits, are you re- referring to at the D P W, the North Compost?
Yeah.
Uh, there's been suggestion and I would support this to a certain extent. We're non-residents have, multiple non-residents have said to me and I've created a small list. What can I pay to use this site? And I agree that they should not be paying a thousand dollars to bring in through bags of leaves two times a year. I think that's absurd. I think we can do better than that, obviously, for non-residents if we're, if there were an option for them, for the people who live outside of the city limits. So that's for further discussion. But yes, there has been no new construct, basically contractor permits, which are the thousand dollars. The people who paid to bring in fifty dump trailers of large wood, so.
I was kind of hoping it went up to help defray the cost. Thank you.
Yep.
So I got.
Is there any other questions?
Nope.
Moving on to number eight. Reports of officers, boards, and standing committees. We have A, B, C, and D. Going to the public, is there any comments, questions, or concerns in regards to agenda item number eight, A, B, C, or D? Going to the board, is there any comments, questions, or concerns in regards to agenda item eight, A, B, C, or D? Go ahead, Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you. And the eight B and the um Parks and Rec. If you remember a while back, um, we discovered they were an advisory board. First of all, I want to say great job on the minutes. To the various staff members. These are wonderful. And it speaks that a quorum was not present and that because they're an advisory board, and again, I don't call, I didn't take and pull back up, but I believe. They can make, continue to make non-mining resident recommendations when they're in session um and. And fellow commissioners, you can remind me, but I think that's what we learned over the road ends. Um, so I don't want them, the planning commission feel like they're impeded. With conducting their business um at all. And I'm not sure about the, the, the quorum piece or what their bylaws see if there's any conflict there, but that's. I guess I just want to assure them that they have the ability to continue to add. And I believe make recommendations to us. Under the legal advice that we previously received. Great job uh on the director's report. Um, Doug, thank you. The. Cost for the ice storm cleanup looked to be for the Parks and Rec looks to be about forty-five thousand. Um, is that in process or we did, we, we haven't seen that yet?
That's not whole.
Okay.
We're waiting on our, waiting for other contractors to give you the prices.
Um, signage for. Avalanche with the wood shop. I know they've been our go-to longstanding. I can tell you that. They're having delays um in delivery. The EDC L D F A had um also reported another. Delay on getting issues for them, and there are, there is a, a change of owner, not that that matters. Um, but I would suggest that we consider um. Encouraging folks to look for alternate bidders. And I'm not sure. What? We should be doing or assisting about forest trails. You mentioned forest trails. There's a huge problem out there. And that's beyond our folks capability and, and I won't pretend to know the history where. What city, point city's obligation is with regard to that. So that's something I just wanted to say thank you for, for checking that out and taking the time in your busy day. Um, but that sounds like that's an open issue yet. Airport, um, I sit on the advisory board there and there were several things in the minutes. I guess I just want to. I want to highlight that also may need to find their way. Onto this agenda, um, snow removal is a problem. Apparently our policy or bylaws say that hold the hanger uh owner responsible. And they're supposed to shut, they remove the snow on their pad. And then someone, then the DPW comes behind and then plows behind them and it backfills it and they have issues with where they can put the snow. So that's an issue that. Um, and they also complained about frequency of. Snow removal. Um, and maintenance in general, mowing, uh, general attention to grading and so forth. There was mentioned, and I think this is serious of uh two things actually that are quite, quite serious. Uh, the tree removal, we're required to maintain an approach. Um, by FAA rules and we had actions in place. To deal with um. The west end on city-owned property, and I believe this commission approved. Monies for all aspects probably, um. And of course, they got bogged down dealing with the ice emergency. Um, but they are hired only to deal with the city property. And I was informed by the board. I have no knowledge, personal expertise otherwise. But it um, it, I, it was stated that. Private property owners. Are responsible for trees and, and, and making sure the trees on their property. Stay below the approach level. And that the expense would be borne by them. So I just want to raise that because we've been out of compliance for a while. I'm not sure how much indulgence, how much longer we're going to get indulgence on that issue. Um, so that's, and that's an open action item. The tie-down cable um is the, the, again, I'm, I'm not a pilot, but I know that there's a tie-down cable that the airplanes hook up to. It's frayed and broken and needs to be replaced. Um, it's a safety issue at this point. Um, and the asphalt which is out there and which is a huge crack in the middle and, and there's, it's, it's reached its end of life. And then last but not least, but. They're very unhappy about the um rate increase in hangar lease fees and are requesting. Data. That. Might have given rise to the amount of the increase. So the treatment of the pieces. Something that probably deserves some very quick attention as does the. Tie-down cable and the other issues. Certainly deserve merit. That's all I've got.
Commission, move it. Did you?
Uh, no, I, I mean, I know a lot of Sandy's concerns and. Um, especially she took over for me and uh being on the airport. A lot of those are button ongoing. Richard knows of a few of them. And hopefully now that we will have Richard in place and the city manager in place, we can start addressing some of these. Uh, things that have been. Backlogged for three plus years.
Did you have anything?
No, I just. The only thing I have to add is the uh snow clearing, while it was. The tenant's responsibility on the lease, the city had taken responsibility for it at some point. Without changing the leases without um. Any direction I could find officially from the city commission. So.
Do you know when that timeframe was?
I don't. I don't know when the timeframe was that it was implemented. Just that at some point it became the city's responsibility because of the difficulty in removing snow. At that location.
All righty, there's no more comments or questions. I'm going to move on to agenda item nine A interim airport manager personnel, continue discussion. All righty, um. Who is this from Becky? I don't think Becky's here. Jessica, you want to? Read through this memo? Or John, I guess would be more appropriate.
Want to come back to Pennington?
Uh, yes, sir. Nine A page thirty-five.
Day letter, May twenty-one, twenty twenty-five to the Boeing City City Commission. From back to Pennington, Deputy City Clerk, subject interim airport manager proposal. Uh, continued discussion background at the May thirteen, twenty twenty-five city commission. Twenty uh thirty. May thirteen, twenty twenty-five city commission meeting commissioners reviewed a proposal from airport advisory board member Richard Wright. Offering to serve as the Boeing City's interim airport manager until a permanent. Uh, appointment is made. According to city attorney Matthew Cross. The commission may proceed with the appointment provided Mr. Wright is licensed by the state prior to assuming the role. Upon further consultation with the Michigan Department of Transportation's. Office of Aeronautics, it is confirmed that Mr. Wright's current assistant airport manager license remains valid. Additionally, with the submission of the updated license application, Mr. Wright is not required to retake the airport manager license exam. The city's attorney has reviewed the license documentation provided by the M dot office of aeronautics. And has given approval to move forward with the appointment. The recommendation, consider one, appointment of Richard Wright as interim airport manager of the Boeing City Municipal Airport N ninety-eight. On an unpaid volunteer basis and approval of Richard Wright to complete the M dot office of aeronautics license application. For airport manager and two, authorizing assistant airport manager Leon Jerem- Jerema. Jerema to execute the M dot license agreement. The following options, A, approve the proposal request, B, deny the proposal request, C, postpone for further information and consideration. Or D, other options as determined by the Boeing City Commission.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Richard, would you like to come to the podium, state your name and speak before I go to uh the public for public comment and the board for deliberation?
Richard Wright? Oh, why the mask? I'm not feeling well tonight. To be fair to you, respectful to you, if I'm wearing a mask, can you hear me? Yeah, okay, all right. I'm sorry, what?
Um, I just, did you have anything else that you wanted to add, Richard? I know you already talked to the commission once. I don't know if any, if you wanted to speak or add anything else to the conversation.
If, if I'm lucky enough to, to be appointed. The very first thing I want to do and, and um. As a public servant, um, the safety. Safety of. Citizens. But also safety of Boeing City. Right now, there's some, some hazards out there that if there's a crash. And it was caused by any of these hazards, you guys are going to be on the line. And I, I can name them right now, longitude. Um, it scares me and it scared me years ago. Um, one of them is the noise abatement. Billboard at the approach and runway two seven. Landing from over Boeing Falls coming in here. There is a huge sign. Oh, golly, I don't know. Probably. Probably uh two, four by sheets of plywood held up by uh four, four by fours in the ground. Right at the approach on the runway. That's a critical phase of flight. Marty, you know, when you come in, you're flaring, you're low on power, you're slowing the airplane down. There's no time and no, no space for error. If, if you trip on that, if you get to get your landing gear caught on it, you're going to nose over and it's all over. When I first got here, one of the first things I did is DPW helped me. Um, in support of the drag race races, they had water fountain right. On the edge of the runway where the, where the draxers or the race cars take off. Every time they do that, they would wash the rubber off the, the road. I have no problem with that. But the Department of Transportation had a problem with the, the hose. Or the, the water station. They had four by four with a pole on it. And it had to be on a fragile, breakable um surface. There was no reason. It. Only a couple of days to go to VPW and say, hey, can we just put this subterranean? And build that it happened. So that's, those are easy things to do. That's my job is to see these things, bring them to the forefront. Unapologetically. Um, I don't want to uh. To, to be a, a, a pain to you guys, but I want to protect you. Drag races, um, that, that's a divisive issue at the airport. Personally, um, I'm for it because it, um, other than leaving rubber on the, the asphalt. It doesn't do any damage. Lot of the guys don't like it because they don't like the aesthetics of the burnout that they do on the runway. But I, I've never seen any damage that it does to the asphalt. The good thing is brings revenue to Boeing City and it brings revenue to the airport. So I'm for it. I don't know, I, I could wax on and on and on.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Wright. I'm going to go to the public for public comment, questions or concerns. I'm going to go to the board for deliberation. We'll start with uh Commissioner Farrell.
I've had a chance to speak with Richard at least once or twice here, and I appreciate his uh. In-depth experience and between him interfacing with. The city staff, I think we have a good working mix. So I'm in favor as of us moving forward with the three recommendations.
Thank you. Um, just moving on down the line, I, I'm in full support. Thank you, Mr. Wright. I appreciate you reaching out to me. Um, proposing this, letting us get it in front of the city commission, getting their decision on it and moving forward. Thank you for verifying the license requirement stage. Um, getting all that information over to the city attorney for him to be able to. Um, base the opinion that he established and gave to us. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Um. You're doing a good thing for the community um. At zero cost. So I appreciate that. So thank you. Commissioner Moody.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. I didn't have a problem when we discussed it last month and Richard's been there before. He's been the chair before. Um, he's a, he's a natural fit and uh I think he would be great.
I met with Mr. Wright, I think within days of being sworn in and knew of his goals and aspirations, and I'm happy delighted to see. That we're going to be able to um. Gain from his knowledge and experience in, in dealing with these very many issues. So I look forward to working with you most part.
All righty, um. The only question that I have, and I just want to put it out there just for all of our expectations. Is at the conclusion of the city commission hiring a permanent city manager. Is that when you're uh understanding is that you're going to no longer be in this role?
Um, no, it's not.
Do you have an interest in continuing to be in the role?
Mr. Matthews gets settled in. Figures out what he wants to do. If um. If I'm not selected, I'm not selected.
Okay.
But I would love to stay on permanent for compensation.
Okay.
But not um, not as long.
Okay.
This is more about self-actionization given by the set last mission meeting. Um, my love of Boeing City.
Okay. That's why I wanted to ask Richard just so then that's out front, that expectation is out there and the board's understanding of that. All righty, with that said, I'll just make a recommend date or make a motion that um the city commission considered one appointing. Mr. Richard Wright as interim airport manager of the Boeing City Municipal Airport November ninety-eight. On an unpaid volunteer basis and approval of Richard Wright to complete the M dot office of aeronautics and license application for airport manager. And two, authorizing assistant airport manager Leon Drayma to execute the M dot license agreement.
Second.
Further discussion. Uh, roll call please, Jessica.
Emma checked.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
The motion's carrying.
All ready. Moving on to agenda item nine B is Jen here. Boom. How you doing, Jen?
Yeah, I'm getting a lot of feedback tonight.
Yeah, I know. I got a lot of thank yous um. And those last three. Memos are great. Thank you.
All right, so on to the Marina waitlist, and I know there's a lot of you comments about waitlists. Um, during the twenty twenty-five budget season, you guys had requested. Um, that you wanted to see how our waitlist works, how other Marina's waitlist works um and consider policy changes. So I contacted twenty-six harbors, the email. Six responded, and so it was nice that you guys got some responses from everyone because I'm not six fact. And the ones that I sent, everybody had the same questions. Do you have seasonal slips? Have your seasonal slips? Do you have a time limit? Um, how much does it cost to sign up? Annual waitlist fee? How do you organize your waitlists? And then when it becomes available. How does it work? Top, bottom, lottery? Anything else? So all six had seasonal slips. Five allowed continuous rentals, one imposed a three-year limit. Um, two have no waitlist period. Um, I think they're rather small. Marina's and so they just don't have a lot of, of waitlist. And then of the remaining four, two charge no fee, one charges twenty-five and one charges fifty. And again, for the annual waitlist fee, two had no waitlist of the remaining four, three had no annual fee and one charged twenty-five. They organize their waitlist. They, based on slip size, one uses a single list and one maintains a list of applicants from previous year's lottery. And then. So when they become available, two assigns slips top to bottom, two use live lottery systems. And of the four, four of the six said they just don't have enough slips. To meet demand. So it seems to be a common. Common thing. Um, and our current configuration here, we have fourteen seasonal slip holders on the small dock. And we have seventeen on the large, so thirty-one slips. And of the current thirty-one seasonal slip holders, we have now. Three have had slips for over twenty years. Um, four for over fifteen, eight for over ten, nine for over five, and then seven for the five or fewer. And we currently have no time limit. They can just continue as long as they're paying. On time and are in good standing. And we have two waitlists. So we have the large dock, which is twenty feet and over, and the small dock, which is twenty feet and under. Each list requires a thirty initial fee, thirty annual fee. You can be on both lists, but you have to pay fees for each. And our large dock waitlist currently has seventy-four. The person in the list spot number one has been on since two thousand eleven. And our large dock waitlist currently has seventy four. The person in the list spot number one has been on since two thousand eleven. Um, which tells you how fast it moves. And the small dock has nine, um, person on top has been on since twenty twenty three. So when a slip becomes available, it's offered to the first person on the corresponding list and um, it's top to bottom. You're number one, you get offered first. If you don't want it, you can have one free like pass for that season and maintain your space. If you refuse a second time, you drop to the bottom. You you don't get to maintain your stuff. Um, so and then you only get the offer once, once per season. So you guys requested the information and then just waiting to see what you want me to do with it.
All right, thank you, Jen. I will try my hardest to collect consensus from the commission to give you directions and moving forward. Um, before I go to the public for public comment, I just want to collect the names and the roles that you guys have at the Michigan Department of National Resources and offer you an opportunity to speak and open the floor up for you.
Um, would you let the person?
Please, yeah, I think you just established. Yeah.
Um, my name is Jason Fleming.
Jason Fleming?
Yes, and this is Kurt Wimble.
Jason Fleming.
Uh, my my position is I'm a section chief for resource, uh, resource protection and promotion with the Parks and Recreation Division. Um, I've been with Waterways Program since ninety seven, ninety eight, roughly around that time. So I've seen quite a bit of change over the years. When I first started here, uh, seasonal boat slips was were less on average than the number of transient boats. Transient demand was high, seasonal wasn't as high, and that was across the state. Um, as we've grown and changed, that demand for seasonal slips as well. Um, most of the things that we do in our agreements and there were some things that were discussed tonight, there are stipulations in for post uh construction operations. Uh, we really try to ensure that there's some equity and 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 some reasonable rates and so forth that are in there. I know the conversation's been brought up about the rates, rate area one um in particular and being up a higher percentage of it. Uh, part of that is that we we prove a rate schedule. So there's ten different rates. In the agreements, it talks about us approving the rates of a community. We found over the years, it was much easier to have a bracket of rates and allow choice than having to come back individually. We used to do a lot of variances on the rates um out there, and so this was a way that we kind of managed that. That rate schedule has not changed for a few years, quite a few years. And we're running the risk of, you know, we should be looking at upgrading and moving that up. Communities can move from different rates, bill, as was discussed here, and that's the option of that ability to do that. But once you get to the top, you're kind of stuck there. And and so when we look at things such as consumer price index and carry that forward, we know that it was about time that we needed to be raising that up. Um, it was in full intention of doing this last year uh and sent to our director to sign off. Um, that was pulled. Um, no other real reason other than the the timing, and so we had already agreed uh in principle with the community about what the rate schedule would look like, so it is a little higher than the rate area one, but that was something that was all above board. It was all approved and we would and we uh we we uh continue with that even though our rate schedules didn't go up. The idea was that that was going to change that. We will be putting the rates forward again for an increase coming up fairly soon, so those should be out before. Try to get them out by August or well before August, so especially for seasonal voters. And for the communities, you want to know what your rates are going to be before you're at the end of the season, so you can start communicating that. Those are just a couple of things. Um, I am here for typically, I wouldn't do this, uh, those of you know, Linay Dawson. Uh, Linay would be the one who would typically be in the operations piece. Linay, uh, good for her, she got an uh a promotion, so to speak, and she got a new job. And uh so sad to see her go because she's been with us for about ten years doing this work and she's done a great job with it. But happy for her as well, so I'm pinch hitting tonight, but I've been going to Waterways Commission meetings. Um, I'll probably be doing this for the next six months or so until we can get a replacement. But I have my uh, I've talked to Jen, you know, there's questions that come up, we're always here available. Uh, one of the things that we talked with Kurt, and I'll turn it over to him, if there uh that if there's ever a decision or something that's coming up from the community, they want some, you know, input from what the the state perspective is. We can always be here, and today's an example of that.
Thank you, sir. Last name is Jeff, L E M M I N G.
Just one M.
Just one R.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Kurt Wimble. I'm the Waterways Grant Coordinator. I distribute all the appropriated funding to the communities that request it and are approved through the application process. So I've been in my position for about a year and a half now, just over eighteen months. So learning, I'm here and I've studied the grants for the community here and if there's any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Thanks, sir.
Just want to put that out. Do you have any questions for us or would you, from protocol, would you prefer us to be here or would you prefer us to sit down if there's audience or questions from?
Well, I'm surprised that you guys aren't here. I have no, I can staff, I don't need, does staff know that you were going to be in attendance? So the commission and the staff are unaware that you're going to be in attendance. I'm glad that you are. So if you want to make yourselves available throughout the conversation, I'm sure there'll be questions that the city commission might have. Um, and I would love to get you guys' perspective and the information directly from you.
Absolutely.
Awesome. And then before you guys leave, would you guys have business cards by any chance?
You might have some.
I have a few.
Okay, all righty. If if you don't mind just providing the copy of those business cards to the city clerk just for record keeping.
Can I ask one simple question? Uh, Jason, what, this has been a big moving consternation over the last few years. When when do you normally require that the uh rates be published between the two of us?
So as far as when you're ready to go forward, your seasonal and transient rates?
Yep.
Um, we would, we try to get them in as early as possible, so we'd like to think by the early summer would be approximately when we're looking at it. Um, have we over the years taken some time? We've gone all the way to December. That is not ideal. Uh, that makes it very difficult for communities to be able to talk to their voters and for them to make those decisions. You know, typically rates don't usually change a lot within a one or two years, but then you also have improvements out there, communities around the the dock or in ensuring that those payments and those those construction costs are through. So some of those things are options where you will see a little bit of a bump. But ideally, the goal would be to have them in by June for the next.
Okay, we had always heard September, so it's nice to hear that you want to meet them earlier than that.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, September, we tried and we failed most of the time.
Hi, I'm glad to see you here. I have dealt with Linay and um I don't remember exactly the gentleman's name that handled the reservation system. I don't think that was you, was it?
So I, we spoke with. Yeah, there's Jeremy Spell is handles coordination. Um, Jeremy works in our section as well, so I'm very familiar with the reservation system too.
Well, and and then this ties, I'm piggybacking off of Marty's comment because uh he made it clear that you'd like to have the rates settled. We we'd like to have the rates settled, but you'd like to have the rates settled and submitted by the end of August, you can load it to your reservation system and work it through your process. And it had a lot to do with that, so I appreciate that. I do have a question. Um, it's been a while since I looked at the terms and conditions of the grant. And I know three or four years ago, there was a question about what percentage of slips could even be allowed to be seasonal. And it was, it was, I I believe, you'll have to correct me, Kurt. The the grant limits or prohibits um it's seasonal. Um, and and that it became, it it becomes a link, link, nod, nod, that, oh, well, we won't enforce that.
So all grant made uh grants are transient based. Any variance from there and requests are made through operations or Linay to uh get authorized and approved to get any more seasonal slips available.
Is it not a true statement that there that the grants speak to being for transient voters? Just that, and then any side agreement, is that in writing? Or is that a tacit agreement?
Yeah, yeah, I I I can probably answer that because we've been doing it for a number of years. Typically, we would uh if there's a request to come in, so let's say it's fifty percent, want to make it fifty percent. And usually, we had historically, that was kind of a parameter, that would be a a holding spot, anything less than that, you know, ten percent, twenty percent. But we would also look at local communities, is there an impact on private businesses? Some of our marinas that we sponsor are in places where there are, you know, we don't want to put be in direct competition necessarily with. Uh, but fifty percent is where we used to go historically, and yes, we would do variance requests. They would be part of a record, so you may go back many, many years. What we don't do is come back and ask every year for it. So if you're looking for historically, what was the number then? How did it settle in? Uh, at Boeing City, would that, is that what you're looking for?
In part, we we have multiple grants that that are aging out at different points in time. And until we, if if we ever reached a day where we had no grants, then our latitude would be greater. And and so when we were reviewing, when I was reviewing this, these contracts, that clause was not lifted, and so each individual uh grant, if you will, has different terms per se, and that's not good. And it should, and to me, if you've got a contract, if this is the, this is the contract, that if there is a clause that's in there that says it's got to be hundred percent, that it should be struck and replaced with something else. Not a sidebar agreement that when people change and folks move on, it's like, oh, yeah, we got to recreate that.
It's, you do an addendum to the agreement is what you're looking for, but and a lot of it, sometimes that's where we run that balance, that these are construction agreements in a lot of places to be put into place. But we also have some post-construction components of it. I would say that um we've used life of facilities that is in the agreement, and that is twenty years. So if you have older grants that go back maybe to the eighties, seventies, those would have been considered to be expired at that point because we would no longer consider that the life of facilities.
But the base, if we have monies and an open grant today in F more Marina, then we're bound for the whole Marina. It's not the dock that we just built or the the pier we just put in, it's for the entire Marina.
Correct, it's for the facilities.
Until that's that satisfied. Um, and I believe the fifty percent is maximum that you have typically allowed, which would explain why various of these others have um smaller numbers that percentage wise of their total slip capacity.
We we have some facilities in our system, communities that are greater than fifty percent.
Do you?
Oh, yes. Um, there are.
Any within the region.
Yeah, uh, Lake Superior um is one of, so you may find that these facilities, these, maybe there are no private marinas in parts of our state.
Sure.
And so the public facilities are the only option for people. And in certain areas, if you're not in a high-demand transient uh use, we don't like to see empty slips. So in cases, I'll use Marquette, Cinder Puff, I believe they're approximately ninety percent seasonal because they can meet the demand of the ten percent transient. But if it were to become an issue, we would like to communicate back with them and say, is there a way that you could adjust that? Because those transient dollars are also bringing in uh money to the local economy.
Do you have any voice or have you uh participated in any discussion about framing a, what we call a point system? For award or lottery of seasonal slips?
So we've talked about this a little bit at the Waterways uh meeting, and knowing that there are, there is a community out there, granted, that that does a lottery and and does cycle it out. Um, one of the difficulties with starting something like that, I think it was brought up, somebody's been on the waiting list since twenty eleven. If you've been on a waiting list for over ten years and all of a sudden you decide you're going to change it up, I think you create more problems for what you, what you're really looking at trying to solve. And that means that those folks who've been paying, you're out, you're out. So um as far as most of us, at least with our state facilities, we just usually do the state, the the standard list. Sometimes it's broken in by the actual size of the slips and you have people who might be, as it was mentioned earlier, Jen said, on multiple lists. But we have not explored looking at anything different as far as a point system, and we have not used a lottery at the, in the state, so.
Well, I'm thinking also, and saying that aside because that is a huge sticky wicket, as you point out. Um, but also then it for, let's just say there's new spaces made available in in the Marina and and it's not static. Um, do you, do you have communities that use any form of point system?
I'm not aware, and again, I'm pinch, I'm kind of setting in for Linay, and they might have a little bit better knowledge on that, but I am not aware and nor have I been in my past history with working in that level, that position, that there's too many point systems. It may be something you see it on maybe the private level. Um, of course, they also offer different things as for, and we used to do a private survey before we set the rates. We used to call all the private marinas. The biggest problem we ran into is there, when we would ask questions, what are you looking to do for your rates? They're saying, well, we're waiting to see what the state does, what you do. So kind of a vicious cycle there that we ran into, so we stopped that practice. Uh, just found it wasn't very uh and went forward with a bracketed larger groups so people had different rates to choose from and then the communities could decide where they fit best in that rate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
All righty, going to public for public comment, questions, concerns?
So these guys?
Uh, in general, the topic. Yep.
Oh, sorry, is he? Okay, he can go first. I'm sorry. We will send that.
Yep. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Jason. Thanks, her. Appreciate you being with us. Don Reidy, uh, local Boeing City resident, and we have a slip here. We were on a waitlist for seven years and we waited our time and got our slip and we've heard of these short-term uh limits. Um, to keep a slip, and I think that's totally wrong, and the people like, if you've been on a waitlist for fourteen plus years, I don't think it's fair that all of a sudden you don't have a space for being the next one. And that's what I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
I am Jeff Strillman, one nine one East Crozier Road, Boeing City. Um, passed out a sheet, I guess I'll I'll refer to that at this point. Um, I know Jen sent out the survey to twenty six. Got six responses. Uh, I spent a lot of time doing market research and six wasn't enough for me. Um, so I personally called nine nine harbors that are listed here. Uh, talked to the harbor master at each one of those and got this information. Uh, I spent a long time on the phone with each one of them. There's, I got a whole lot more information than was presented on the sheet. Um, but I will echo what Mr. Wright said. Um, my wife and I were on waiting list for seven years. We've been a seasonal slip holder for eight, eight beyond that. Um, the 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 waitlist seems to be I get the feeling it's a little bit overwhelming to the commission that there's seventy, I guess I have the number wrong, Jen, I had eighty two last I knew. As you can see by the list here, it's not that big of a deal. Um, it it's Marina life. Um, if you take a look at Elbrock's managing, managing eight hundred on the waitlist. And again, if you have paid to be on that waitlist for that amount of time and all of a sudden you upset that apple cart, um, I'm sure you're going to be getting asked for a lot of refunds, so I would agree that that um went to lottery system is not appropriate. Obviously, these nine, as you can see, none of these are lottery system, they're all uh as your name comes up from from top to bottom. Uh, and there has been some discussion as far as local residents getting advantage um in in the state, I'm not positive, but I think within the grant that it's not not allowed, am I right in that?
Correct, there wouldn't be, we, there should be, because there are lottery lines that are here, those lottery lines come from around down to sea. You want to make sure that that that's applicable as far as access.
Um, I did a comparison of last year's waitlist to this year's waitlist, um, which is rather dynamic, it's moving all the time. Um, eight, eight names dropped off from last year. Now, not necessarily from the top, but within that that list, eight dropped off. I personally know of at least four of them are currently listed that probably wouldn't take a while and they're up towards the top. So it's a, it's a dynamic thing, it's moving all the time, it's not, it's not unusual. Um, every harbor master I spoke with said the transient slips are their key. I know we want to make our marinas. I know we wanna make our marinas profitable as it can be, or at least revenue generating. And there are several ways of doing that. Um, and I'll, I'll just give one example. As a, as a seasonal boater, I think my wife and I probably travel outside of this Marina more than anybody else in this Marina. So this Marina's experience, what they have to offer. Um, we left for eight, for ten days last year. We had a dockmate that left for fourteen days last year. To my, in, in our contract, it states that we have to give the office forty-eight hours notice so that our slip can be rented when we're gone. To my knowledge, the time that we were gone, the ten days and the fourteen for them, not one day was rented. Our slip was rented from what I was informed by other boaters. Um, to, to me, that's just a, a fault in revenue, you know, it's a, it's a revenue potential. Um, all right, trying to gather my thoughts here. Um, that, there are other ways that, this, this is a topic to me that isn't a city commission. In this format, it's tough to discuss all the dynamics involved. So, you know, it would be, what's nicer to do a roundtable discussion? And I don't know if that's usual, there's a few of us that have put together kind of an informal Marina advisory group um to offer ideas, you know, back to the city. Um, again, again, that's in the infant stages, but uh it's just another way of, I guess, giving feedback. I had a chance to meet with three of the commissioners um in depth for probably over an hour with each one. I'm in hopes that some of those comments, you know, may, may come up as you deliberate. So. Well, I got to know.
Jeff, real quick, what is the slip number? I just wanna verify that ten day, fourteen day, that we did not take advantage.
My slip number?
Yes.
Slip five.
Slip five, and what was the name?
Three, I believe.
Five and three, thanks, sir. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, my name is Dave Light. One nine zero eight East Ashland Street, Midland, Michigan. Uh, I am a seasonal slip holder. Uh, my wife and I and our kids came to uh Wayne City quite often. Uh, we had a uh trailer boat, sailboat, and uh we would make trips here regularly. The harbor master said, I see you guys seem to enjoy this. You come here often, why don't you get on our waitlist? And so we did. We waited nine years and got a seasonal slip. Uh, when we got a seasonal slip, we thought uh we will make the decision that we are going to sail and get some, a little more appropriate. I think if you start changing your policy, she indicated, she, harbor master, uh indicated that uh if we were to uh get a seasonal slip, we would have it until we decided we weren't going to use it anymore. If you change that policy, uh and for example, give a set term, you need to notify everybody on the list that you're waiting for a seasonal slip for three years, five years, whatever you say. Are they going to stay on that list? Why pay? And then uh have a slip? And then five years later, three years later, you don't have a slip. You look at the list in front of you and you would have to be on each of those waiting lists so that when you can no longer be here, you go somewhere else. So would somebody want to be on that list for a long period of time? And then not be able to be there after a few years? Uh, I, I think you'd start losing people uh rather than encouraging people to come. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So either uh, well, some township. And a couple of comments on the waitlist. Um, quick, I, you know, I've personally been on the waitlist, uh, well, I think eleven years. Something, and uh I've been paying my twenty-five dollars a year be on the waitlist as other people have. And I think I, the way I looked at it was, it's kind of like a contract. The city says, hey, pay us the money, stay on the waitlist. When it comes to your turn, you get the slip. And you get to keep the slip for as long as you're not used. I, I understand that there's people, there's a few people that have been on there for a long time, but that's not one. Um, I think by looking at me, you can tell I'm probably not gonna have a boat slip for thirty years. Uh, I would like to think it good, because it probably won't. Uh, I think that, and I think a trend was, is natural there. So I think um, you know, I don't, I'm not in favor of limiting the amount of time. Once you get there, wait your turn. We've all been taught to do, wait your turn. When you get there, you get rewarded for it, you paid your fee all these years. And that's basically where I think it comes down to. I don't really understand what, I don't, I guess I don't understand what, what caused this, this discussion to begin with. Um, I don't think I've ever heard anything that said, this is the problem that we identified and we need to change it. But I think the system that is being used right now seems to be working well. And I'm not sure who's pushing or why somebody is pushing for a change in it. Um, just to go back a little bit on the, the other topic I was talking about, you know, I mentioned it. Um, you know, there were some inaccuracies came from the, from the table here. The reason that's important is because we're all talking about funding the Marine. And I'm, I'm in support of funding the Marines. The guys are, we wanna make sure that people know that the funds, public funds that come from both the city and from D N R, the D N R's money comes from voter registrations and two percent gas tax. So let's get, that's taxed that voters actually pay in gas. That's where half of the money comes from every time, it's public money. And so to say, somebody gets a preference when we've all contributed to those improvements into the building of the Marina and the opening of the public Marine. I don't think it's fair. Everybody has the same chance. It's not like saying some people don't have the chance. Uh, we all have an equal chance. And if we're all, if we're boaters, we've all contributed to them through purchasing of those registration policies and from the voting gas tax. So I think uh, oh, that's fine. Okay, so we'll just close it up.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? All righty, I'm gonna close public comment at this time and move to the board for deliberation. Um, we'll start down at that end this time and move this way opposite of last. So we'll start with Commissioner Pritchard.
This is Sticky Wicket. I, uh first and foremost appreciate um the comment about having paid for years and, and then in the end to have uh it change. I made the comment last meeting that I believe we should stop um additions to the large dock waitlist, seventy-four. Uh, will take a long time to rotate through. We talked about um modifying the policy that currently exists and that spoke, I believe Commissioner Lester brought it up. The current policy is if your name comes up, you refuse once, you get to stay on the list and then, and then move down. And I kind of, I personally feel that that's a valid call, that perhaps we should look at if someone is coming up on the list that um they, they have their, their opportunity and that it goes away. And I could be convinced otherwise, but you get, your name comes up, you go. Um, one of the things I also asked for previously, and I think we've started moving in that direction, is that the commitments related to that, the, the commitments for the next year that we actually have those documents completed early in the season so that anyone could be notified in a timely fashion that there is going to be a slip available, if they're gonna go out and, and buy a big boat. This Marina, part of the, it's an enterprise and it is, there are a lot of funds that come out of the city coffers. And there is a very strong sentiment in the community that um it is subsidizing um the actions of a few uh for a short period of time and that those resources um might be used otherwise. Now, we have taken some very active steps to bring our Marina as it is up to speed, and that will help. And there are certainly a lot of operation, uh opportunities for operational improvement. Just as you pointed out about the practices, if someone's gonna be away, that the, the slip gets leased out. That's the way, when I, like, this is the first year of my life, I haven't had a boat. Um, and Bay Marina works that way. You know, you identify when you're gonna be away and there's the opportunity to do that. We did neglect um keeping up with the rates for a period of years. I don't know which, I'm having fun in me the, the years that there were no increases. I didn't, but we're behind. And part of that was also because of the condition in the Marina. Rightfully so, Waterways was saying, no, we're not till you allocate the resources to this. We're not giving you any rating, rate increases. And now we've made progress in that, in that area. So I, I appreciate um the comments that are being made. The lottery system and the changing of the horses in the stream is a sticky wicked. And I guess I would be, I would support a roundtable discussion with the group that you are informally um speaking of to figure out what the, the best path forward is. It needs to pay for itself fundamentally. And we have a responsibility to make sure that from city administration side, that we are administering it properly. And we, we have some improvement there, I think, that we can do to help run it as an enterprise and increase the revenues. Um, I struggle with the lifetime. You've got it forever. Um, I, I, I had this, I've had to scramble, I had to scramble divine boat slip, a Marina slip, and when for the, you know, I lost access too late from it. And I know what a challenge that is. Um, I do believe in the commercial marketplace and I would like to see the commercial marketplace step up um in adding capacity. It has been, I just find it interesting they haven't, you know, with this overwhelming, this overwhelming demand. Um, there are far more natural harbors where this opportunity exists. But fundamentally, it boils down to um, it, it needs to be sustainable of its own accord without subsidy by the city. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, um, I agree with a lot of Sandy's point. Jeff and Jeff and Jeff and Carrie and the few that were here the, the last time. Um, I'll uh honor my uh mistake. Um, but, but I, I was talking twofold, I will say that, that the, the bottom line is it, in the clarification for everyone else, saying that we, you know, we're the cheapest rate in the area. Um, but there's a lot that goes into that. We, 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 we mismanaged the Marina for years. And while we did have some raises, we didn't keep up with them. Hence, the reason that we started this discussion six years ago, you know, the discussion to expand the Marina started twenty years ago. But um, the bottom line is uh the um, the rates were way behind for quite some time. Um, we are not now, as, as Jason even alluded to. And uh, um, but that hasn't, you know, that hasn't solved the issue with um the cat, the, the fact that the Marina doesn't cash flow. And Commissioner Pritchard just spoke to that uh in and of itself. That's our problem. That's not the boater's problem, I understand that. Um, the uh, as far as, you know, the waitlist, we, you know, the question was asked, where, where did that come from? Came from, I, I think the city manager started it four years ago when we were talking. And uh, you know, about what we should do here. And, and then it grew from there. And uh, you know, wh- what to do with the waitlist? Again, you know, it's been offered up that, you know, uh, speaking with a few of the boaters that, you know, they'd like to have it, you know, sit down and, and try to, you know, bring something from the boaters, you know, how, how they see it. I, I don't have a horse in the race. I don't have a boat, I don't care. Um, I uh, uh, again, to um echo what Commissioner Pritchard said is, you know, I'm a steward of this community and our job is to make things not only fair, but equitable. And equitable is a long way off. Um, so again, the waitlist doesn't um, you, you know, I, I don't, I don't really have a, a sway in one way or the other. Um, the uh, you know, we can't control, you know, the resident, non-resident. Um, appreciate that, uh, that uh, um, you know, the point system thing, there's been a lot of different things brought up. Um, the waitlist as it sits, and, and looking down the sheet, I appreciate the sheet. Uh, you know, uh, I, I can't uh, you, you know, it is, it is large, it is cumbersome. Um, it, w- once again, just even that, you know, operating that takes more dollars out of the coffers to run that waitlist. Granted, there's money being put in to run that waitlist, I understand that. But it's uh, you know, it, here you are, you know, trying to, you know, trying to dance the dance. Um, the uh, a- a- as far as um, the um, uh, again, the waitlist, I don't care. Uh, a- as far as the limits, uh, on uh, how long um someone can have one? Uh, again, I'd, I'd love, I'd love to hear comments from an advisory committee, you know, from it, you know, a, a, a big voter group, you know, to say the same thing. Other than if talk to, you know, quite a few of the same faces that are here. Um, it's not representative of everyone. I, I'm sure it'd be the same for everyone that already has a slip. But I, I guess what I would, and it's, I respect, you know, uh, Mr. Gator speaking, you know, being that he is on the waitlist and he still doesn't have one. And he's still for leaving the waitlist where it is. I think that speaks volumes, you know, versus someone that has a slip saying, I don't wanna change. Um, not that I don't respect that opinion, it's just, it means more hearing from somebody that is on the waitlist. Um, and uh, if uh, you know, if that's the way that uh it um, it boils out, we, we have an interim sys- city manager. You know, my, my uh, uh, last time, part of the reason to table this was until we had a position where we knew where we were going. Right now, we still have a Marina that's not fully, completely, fully even functioning. So it's the cart before the horse anyhow. Uh, and um, we've had long conversations on this. We've had conversations on this in budget sessions. Um, and which are open to the public, any of you can come, they're boring as heck, but you go ahead and come. And uh, um, so, you know, I think there's uh, uh, I think there's ways that we can try to, you know, come together. Uh, again, the way we've been doing it, i- is it perfect? I don't believe so. Um, is it completely imperfect? No. Um, so I, I think there, I think there are some ways that we can look to improve it. Um, and uh, I, and I would look to um, try to uh, sit down with a, a good mix of uh, all the boaters and hear uh their opinions. And, and again, you know, some, some from the waitlist. I do appreciate this list. I appreciate the list that we've, that we had from uh, um, Jen. Uh, hers, you know. We didn't get a, a lot of these more localized ones, we had a broader uh, um, broader area from where we got. Uh, where she was able to, you know, pull information and uh. I, I think that, you know, plays in, the, there, there weren't many that, there were many that deviated from this. You know, so of uh, of, of hers, uh, um, they uh, at least half. Agreed with exactly what, what this is that everybody has in their hands tonight, I guess, whatever, it got passed out there. So um, in conclusion, I, I'm fine with uh. M- moving on and uh, I, you know, I think, I think one thing is very important. I think we're going to make a concerted effort, you know, uh, Jason and Kurt. That you'll have your information when you need it. And I think Sandy stated it best, because if you have your information when you need it, then the boaters can have their information when they need it. And so these slips, maybe, maybe they will turn over more naturally. We've, we've done a poor, poor job of doing that. And it's, it's been horrendous and pathetic and we pounded on these desks every year saying, why is this not done? Because we knew your timelines and thank you for being gracious and, you know, and, and working with us. But, you know, again, the uh, um, we understood that when we, you know, take the grants. We immediately become shackled and uh, we, we no longer are driving the bus. Um, and uh, so uh, we'll, we'll live within those. But uh, you know, with uh, John at the helm, you know, he'll. He, I'm sure he'll probably still be at the helm here into early August and between him and this board. Uh, I'll, can't make you the promise, but I'll say we'll try darn hard to get you, you know, all that information way ahead of time. Cause it, it hasn't been there and it's been ridiculous to try to run a Marina uh, so backwards to me, so.
Alrighty, um. So some of the questions that came up in public comment, um. Doesn't understand what caused this discussion, this is just my perspective, I think Commissioner Moody just provided a perspective at the beginning. His comments, the perspective I can provide as to why this commission right now is having this conversation starts. Um. About four years ago, when I got elected to this city commission. This room was packed with a lot of the same faces that I'm seeing here right now, but with some additional residences. Um, also packing the room in opposition of the complete expansion that was on the table for the proposal four years ago. Um, so similar faces in the room now, some faces are not in the room that were in the room then, really spoke um. In opposition of that expansion, talking points that they had was the issues with the fifteen year. Waiting period to get even a slip, um, was the comments in the timeframe being discussed at that point in time. Now I think we're sitting at what, fourteen years is the longest one? Right now, we have fourteen years, five thirty-one, twenty-eleven. Um, so that's why this conversation is happening. And why did it not happen immediately within that timeframe? Or just pull your attention to page thirty-nine, very first sentence during the twenty-twenty-five budget session. The city commission reiterated their desire to review the Marina waitlist and consider the policy change. This commission for the last four years has been asking to have this conversation. Out of the input that was provided by the public at that point in time. I personally do not have a dog in the fight, as Commissioner Moody stated. Um, I don't have an interest in taking something away from someone. And that's really what it's going to boil down to, right now we have two perception or two perspectives. One group feels something is going to be taken away from them because there's change coming potentially. Or, well, there's a conversation revolving around potential change to the policy. So one perspective is, um, something's going to be getting taken away from them. The other perspective that was strongly communicated to the elected officials four years ago. Was one group feels they do not have reasonable access, even though they are subsidizing that public asset. Um, it would be great if that enterprise fund was funding itself and functioning without any subsidies of the general tax fund. But unfortunately, three thousand eight hundred residents of Boyne City are subsidizing that public Marina. Through um subsidies coming out of the general fund. And you can come to the budget sessions, you can see that money, you can see how that subsidy is happening. Um, it would be great if you can come to the budget meeting um and see that money and see that happening. And because even meeting with Mr. Gaithers the other week. Um, that was a talking point that I kept having to touch back on and I think there is not. The correct acknowledgement of that and that's really why we find ourselves in the situation that we are right now. Um, it's misbudgeting, that's why we have realistic result of what is out there right now, we have mismanagement. That's why we're dealing with what we have out there right now. Um. Four years ago, the price tag was what, five point eight million dollars to completely redo the Marina? The city didn't have the money to do that. Um, so we're running the acid into the ground, we're not budgeting for it correctly, we're mismanaging it. And now we need to repair it and the total cost repair that four years ago was five point eight million dollars. Um, every single thing that we've talked about in the last four years has gone up at least about forty percent. So add forty percent to that five point eight million dollars, you're going to get it a little bit more accurate. Um, in that timeframe of that four years, the DNR, the Waterways Commission. Um, is seen, and this is just an assumption, I spoke to this in a previous meeting, but. You guys go out and evaluate and actually. Let public mariners know the longevity, the ratings of their docks, the conditions of the docks, so on and so forth. Um, Commissioner Pritchard has brought that up consistently and talked about that. Um, unfortunately, administration and prior commissioner leadership did not take that document. And go and apply it accurately. Um, and that again is contributing to the situation that we find ourselves in. Um, that's, that document, some very specifics talked about the longevity of the dock. We've, we've exceeded the longevity length of that um, by a significant portion. Five plus years easily and we're just continuing to run it in the ground. Um, all the way down to the point where this last um. Big decision that we had to make, there's a special meeting just probably three or four weeks ago in regards to um. Arben Mosh having to alter the recommendation because we wanted to take a portion of D-Dock. Relocated to E and utilize that. Um, but the issue was that that portion they wanted to move over to E-Dock was actually. Beyond the capacity of life and they had a fear that it wasn't going to float correctly and it was going to cause damage and bottom out. Um, so we had to have a special meeting that popped up out of nowhere, we had to go through that conversation. Look at the risk and liability, it was great on both sides, but. There was a crappy situation that once again we find ourselves in due to the mismanagement and misbudgeting of the Marina historically. And we went with the least amount of risk and that was to continue to do that. And that ultimately was saving us around five hundred and some thousand dollars on a change order. And potential loss revenue of around seventy thousand dollars this summer. By eliminating eight slips this summer, if we had to go with option B. Um, but we chose to go with a little bit of risk and using the portion of D-Dock that's way beyond its lifespan. And trying to save that seventy thousand dollars in lost revenue and that savings of about five hundred thousand dollars. Um, so it's a tough situation to sit here and make decisions on this um, situation in general. Alls I'm allowing is for a conversation to happen around it. I know there are some members that are completely, you know, against any type of conversation revolving around potential, potential change. And they would not like that to happen, but as I think through my three years of sitting here, whether it's short-term rentals. Whether it's this Marina, whether it's public parks continuing to get funding. So the open space can have the next space completed or not, I'm going to allow those conversations to happen. Um, and, and it's, it's a weird situation because. Someone always feels like they're losing something or something's being taken away from them. Um, I don't want to take anyone's slip away, I just want to make sure that the three thousand eight hundred residents of this city. That are subsidizing that public ass- asset have a realistic access, realistic. And accessible opportunity to be able to use that, fifteen years on a waiting list, I don't think is fair. Um, especially to the community members that are stuck subsidizing that. Um, so I'm entertaining a conversation to see what that change potentially might look like. And I invite whatever advocate group or whatever advisory board you guys would like to put together to come to the table, just like we have done with. The housing developments on lockdown lake at the library, um, at the short-term rentals housing. Or the short-term rental town hall meetings that we did. Um, come to the table, have a conversation, speak your opinion on it and we're going to try and collect. The middle ground, trying to make as least amount of people upset on this side, least amount of people upset on this side and try and move forward. Um, so yeah, that's kind of what I got to say. Go ahead, Commissioner.
This is not a single faceted issue, uh, the Marina itself and the reservation system. From my perspective, it ain't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Uh, so I'm not, I haven't heard a problem statement that requires us to fix that at this point. You, uh, other commissioners may have heard something four years ago, I, I have not heard anything so far. That compels me to uh, move forward with a change. Um, we as a community have. Put money into the Marina and we have a commitment, hopefully now, uh, moving forward with our capital planning. Uh, to maintain it. Um, the operational improve, improvements that have been suggested, um. Uh, there have been other ones that have been suggested and I think that advisory group is a great avenue for some of that to come, come out. Uh, but sustainability of the Marina and its operation will continue to be a challenge for the city. They're not handing out grants like they used to and I'm hoping Waterways will continue because we need more support moving forward. Uh, to, to make some significant improvements and to. Actually see um, the, the approved plan, the modified plan that was approved for that. Uh, and that's something that we individually as a city cannot sustain to make that happen. Independent, independently, there has to be some other grant money. Um, the costs for the Marina, uh, as of this last year are all being assigned to the Marina. As they should have been, um, and we have a better operational cost or operational. Um, picture of what's happening. Uh, so we know now what it takes to run it and uh, the future will be what it will be in terms of. Moving forward and how much we have to work with in our, with the pool of money we have. Which is based on village and how far we can make that go. Given competing interests, parks, fire truck replacement, um, ambulance replacement, uh. Police, police car replacement, all of the things. Because in the past, we as a city did not look at what the maintenance cost was of. A particular project or endeavor. That has been changed, so now that we're looking at the whole picture. Not only it's great to get it in, but you've got to maintain it. And you've got to invest to maintain it, usually that's at a lower cost than the original investment. We have to do what's good for the city and be stewards of the money that we're getting and make it work long term. And it's getting really hot in here. Can somebody get that? I was having it too, so. So the uh. You know, it's. I'm all for moving forward without any ma- making any changes on the reservation system, recognizing the challenges we have with. The Marina and every other department within the city, so.
Mayor.
You're right.
If I may, um, I too would have appreciated knowing how this dialogue is going to shift. Um, a lot, a great deal, um, as. I'll be the first one to tell you, I started a whole local group called We The People because we were ahead of it, that we weren't going to come up with. We were not going to pay for a seven million dollar bond. And pointing out that in what Tim was alluding to. Is that Waterways with the cooperation of our own city staff and Harbor Master at the time. Did a study of every resource of the United, in the state of Michigan to do a facilities assessment. And they gave the forecast of what it was going to cost at that time, this was. Finally, I think there was a published report in two thousand twenty, but I, but it actually had begun some years before that. And at that time, and they forecast zero to five years, we needed to spend a million for. Um, the five to ten year plan, because we knew then, this was by, by the way, it was by twenty-five, like two thousand twenty-five. By the five to ten years, we're going to need to spend another million two. And then ten to twenty years, another hundred and ten, uh, one million, hundred and ten. And by type, and this, by the way, also included the boat launch. Because we keep talking about the Marina, but the operation of the Marina includes the boat launches. And in budget this year and in budget last year, uh, we were, chose not to, did not. Put in, allocate funds to fix the boat launch, which serves the largest number of residents. And transients that come to the community and it desperately needs work. Um, so it's a little one, you know, it, so. The idea, and I, I guess I wanted to come back to where Tim was, that, that, there's a very strong sentiment about. How much the public coffers and the general fund end up being tapped. We're already having to do it for the cemetery, we're not going to stop that, it's, it's a very similar situation. There was a surplus not long ago, um, from a building fund. That was almost at four hundred thousand, that we ended up having to allocate because of the cost estimate shortfall. For the Marina and that was after the budget. It was after the budget, nevermind it was like, oh my God, and, and you know, it's like. The people of the community is not self-funding, the people in the community do not feel that it represents the whole. And we have pickleball you, work, users having to come up with seven grand for their striping and that, and a little league people. I know it's not exactly the same, but that's the way they feel about it. Is they see these things, they look at the, the things that they're having to go out and do bake sales and fundraisers and working hundreds of thousands of dollars. Over to the, pay for, to keep the Marina operational. We've made a lot of progress, we've made a lot of progress. We've got the, we've got the ship sailing in the right direction, the message was loud and clear. And it turned over those three positions and then subsequently ours. Fix what you have in its existing footprint and make it run like a top and we're moving in that direction. Thanks.
So, again, I want you guys to understand. DNR, city administration report, million plus dollars needs to go into your Marina. And what we did, what the leadership at that time chose was to budget twenty thousand dollars. And I questioned that a year after year after year. And I was, they tried to derail my thought, that's ludicrous, what are you talking about? I think it's crazy when you have a state agency that is looking at. Municipalities that they're funding because they're giving money to these municipalities and checking how responsible these municipalities are being. With that funding source. We were very irresponsible, we ran it into the ground, we did not take any of the recommendations. We continued to miss budget, we continued to mismanage. We're here now, now we're trying to move forward, we've changed budgeting practices, we've changed preventative maintenance practices. We've changed all the way down to staffing changes on how things are being done. Um. So this is just another part of that conversation and change that might be coming. It's not that we're advocating for it, my perspective, this conversation came to the city commission. Timeframe four years ago when I was running, um. Moving forward with this conversation, that's the next steps in this convo here. So basically, the city commission has asked for information for quite some time, a few years now. We've got the information, thank you Jen for gathering the information, I really appreciate it. Now we're in a position, I know it's some time after the request, um. My perspective, step one is verifying the scheduled hard date to implement a policy change for twenty twenty-six voting season. If that's in the interest of the city commission. Um, identifying that hard date is going to be step one in my opinion. And then from there, that's really going to model the urgency or depict the urgency of what this conversation needs to be. If we're looking to implement policy change prior to twenty twenty-six, we need to know that date. Thank you for some dates, uh, ch- change. Thank you for some date, uh, ch- changes, because we've always were communicating September. It's nice to know it's June. We've. As Commissioner Moody multiple times stated. We requested for that information, um, year after year to be coming around September, and it typically was coming around October. Um, so now that we know June, I think that helps us establish that timeframe a little bit. Setting that date is going to be step one and then knowing that urgency will probably be step two, um. So let's have that conversation. I guess as far as this, so Commissioner Pritchard, do you have an interest in implementing a policy change by the twenty twenty six voting season?
Ideally, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, if you're looking for a hard date, I, I, I guess we're, going off of what you're saying, um, I guess I would say. Let's put that hard date, you know, the Labor Day or whatever, so we can. Have John, um, do, do some research. Again, we have, we have three items here that we have got to clear up with the Marina right now. And then, uh, again, hopefully. Have everything up and running. We're already have a setback with the Marina again with the electrical, which won't be done until August. Um, so, uh, I, I think this will give, you know, um, the, uh, the boaters and the waitlist people. Um, speaking to the back corner, uh, to come, you know, try to, um, formulate, uh. Uh, their positions respectively too, and, and then we can have that discussion further. Um, but so I, I guess you're looking for a hard date. I would say, you know, Labor Day.
Okay, and that's, and that's all I'm looking for is if Commissioner Pritchard supports policy change prior to twenty twenty six, if you do. I do.
And what I want us to be specific about what we're paying a policy about what.
And I don't know what the policy change is and it's. I guess if you, if you, if you're willing and patient enough to hear their entire conversation, I think it would, I think it's going to make sense. As we go through the conversation, um, but one, I'm trying to gain consensus on timeframe here. That's step one. If, if, if we want to do that prior to twenty twenty six, we know that's the timeframe. Back to you, Farrell, on some future anticipation points that task staff with scheduling public input meetings to gather public opinion. Task staff to create policy change draft around commission and public opinion. Through town hall public opinion sessions, similarly like what we did with STR, so on and so forth. But before we go farther in that conversation and get some of the answers that you're looking for, I'm trying to establish timeframe.
Well, I, what I heard tonight was we had the DNR requiring us to make decisions on rates early. To move forward for loading it in their system and for that process to occur. So. That rate discussion I don't see necessarily tied to the other discussion that I'm hearing occur, which is. Policies and procedures, procedures around waitlist and whatever else we're going to do.
I, I think it was discussion on Marina operations. I guess that's probably a better, um. Better reading.
Yep, go ahead. And then I gotta hand up back here, so go ahead.
I appreciate what the, the distinction that Bob's making. I really do. Um, there it. Well, we do need to be settled on rates and seasonal rates. And I guess I, I, I can appreciate what he's saying, but also popped into my mind. Back to the money is we have not addressed the. Well, we need to address. It's, it's on in front of us to address. The Band-Aid change that we had to make to keep E functional that it's going to, that needs to be quoted and bid and awarded. By August first to get D doc whole to the alternate three design plan, number one. Number two, the T doc itself has a, a, a great deal of, uh, damage. Because we are not in any natural harbor and it, that needs to be quoted and developed and fixed. Which is also a revenue stream. So there's a subtlety in there, I guess. I, I appreciate, um. What Bob's saying, so I guess that's worthy of some discussion.
And I wanted to come back to that.
Policy change versus rates do.
Yeah, and I, I wanna, I wanna clarify on when I'm talking about. When I say hard date to implement policy change, that's exactly what I'm alluding to. I'm not. They gave us rate timeframes. I'm not, that's a whole entire different conversation. We're not, this memo does not. Address rates whatsoever. We are talking. Waitlist policy period. And so when I say timeframes. In the three years that we've asked for this to be an agenda topic. We were pushed back by consistently individuals and administration by saying, well, we've already sent out the seasonal. Invoices. They've already paid. You can't make any changes now. Okay, we'll bring it up next year. And that's what got us here three years later.
That's why I said the labor.
So when I'm speaking on timeframes, it has nothing to do with rates. It has to do with invoices going out and kicking this can down the road for another year. The same song and dance that I've experienced for three years now.
So I stand by my commitment to, uh, hard date of August.
Okay.
Hard date of August? No one threw anything. I said Labor.
Twenty, the hard dates for change for changes to be affecting the twenty twenty six season.
Understand, August, I said Labor Day, so August first, August.
No, I mean, I can just, if whatever the timeframe is. That would be to obviate what Tim just described happening. Whatever the lead time is to get done with whatever we need to done to get done prior to. The voting season, seize holder, the season holders being notified and so forth. So does that help?
Yes. Hey, Jen, can you, can you help with the conversation as far as when do you send out the seasonal invoices? When, what, what's that timeframe and what's the latest that you can send out the seasonal slip invoices? Okay. Do you have a date in November? Okay, so seasonal slip invoices are due in November. Is there a possibility to push that back to December? Okay. It's just a question, just in case we get to the point where we're hard in crunch on time. When is it?
Well, I'd suggest that, that we talked about that billing policy as well. And in the private Marina, you, you, you're asked in November, are you coming back? And you have your monies in by no later than February first, no later than February first. So waiting until June to me is not acceptable either. We talked about that before. So I, anyway, Tim, do you have any need?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Jen. So we sent out the invoices in November. Perfect. Okay, awesome. So that gives us our timeframe right there. Um, we, we have to.
But again, that's only the deposit. Payment pool is not due until, like.
Right. And what I'm trying to accomplish is I don't want us to send out invoices in August. Because we can't send out invoices in August and then make a policy change. Policy change would have to come prior to invoices being sent out.
They have to go to the rate. They have to know their seasonal.
Correct. Um, so do we want to look at Labor Day being the hard date and then tasking administration with the import sessions? Gathering information from the public, from the public committees that want to establish themselves like we the people have done in the past. Um, bring draft changes potentially as an outcome from those import sessions.
I support.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Moody, you support?
Yeah, I made the recommendation.
Okay. All right, Jen, does that, does that, right here, Jen, in this last section, it says, recommendation, the city commission review the information above and provide to city staff. The direction on next steps. Does that help provide you guys with next steps on what you can do to help us with potentially. Reading those town hall import sessions to draft potential policy change?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. John? And help me support through that. Okay, anyone else have anything that they would like to add in this conversation before I move this along? I don't think this needs to be any formal motion. Yes, sir.
Just, can I go ahead real, real quick, um. On seasonal rates, one of the reasons when we agreed to increase the seasonal rates for this year was for a true year plan. So being a period one and, and ten percent of, of transient rates, yes, you can, that's, that's, that's. Well, the transient rates, both transient rates and seasonal rates will be increasing. So you'll have that opportunity to look at that. So I just wanted to be cleared up some of those pretty fun last year.
We were locked in for the two years.
Thank you, sir. How far did you guys travel?
Uh, I, I'm from Lansing, but I'm going to be staying up in the area for orders.
Awesome. Well, thank you both for making something available and traveling.
First time we were blessed.
Seriously.
Yes.
All righty, um, if there's no more conversation on this agenda item, I'm going to move us right along to agenda item number ten eight. Trackless attachment purchase request.
I didn't even know they were coming.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of waiting for things to die down here for a second. As you guys are well aware, the Public Works Department has recently replaced a tractor that is primarily utilized for snow removal and mowing. The city now has two MT seven trackless municipal tractors. Uh, in this budget year, the planned purchase of two attachments was included, and these items are as follows, a boom flare mower. And a five-position plow, the flail mower thirty five nine and the plow roughly seventy five hundred. Pricing as approved in the twenty five, twenty six budget is not correct as there was an error. The quoted price included did not match the prices submitted by McQueen. And this error caused a shortage of twenty one thousand, one twenty two on page twelve four of the approved budget. Good news is this shortage can be made up by the difference in the recent purchase of the heavy duty plow truck. As presented in the last city commission meeting. That purchase will likely be one hundred thirteen thousand, five sixty six. That's with the imposed potential tariff. Leaving the balance at around thirty six four in the equipment purchase portion of the motor pool account. The recently imposed tariff pricing that occurred on June first. For this purchase has caused a net increase of twenty six fifteen as the shipping for the plow has been removed. Uh, as we get both of these items at once, um, per the recent, uh, recently we see quote that dated June second, twenty twenty five. This planned purchase will still leave the equipment replacement portion of the DPW in good position moving forward due to the over expected price. For the dump truck coming in significantly lower than we had anticipated. Uh, this is a budgeted expense that will be purchased using account six, six, one, zero, four, zero, nine, seven, zero, the motor pool equipment purchases. Account with the, and this will leave that account in the balance of around a hundred fifty thousand, one forty eight, nine thirty four. Uh, my recommendation should be to award a contract in the Queen Equipment for the purchase of the two attachments for the MT seven trackless municipal tractors, of which we now have two. An amount not to exceed forty eight, seven thirty seven per the bid proposal dated June second and to authorize the interim manager. Or city clerk president to execute the necessary documents. You have to go here, be telling everything and hear any questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comments, questions, or concerns from the public? Going to the board deliberation, um, start with Commissioner Moody this time.
Yeah, um, anytime you know I ask, excuse me. I understand that, um, you know, the, uh, um. The misquote, I don't know how it got misquoted by that far. Um, we talked about this hard when we were, you know, talking about. Uh, buying the trackless and, uh, at that point in time, yeah, it was, um. You know, it was taught that, you know, the, the two combined wouldn't be twenty thousand dollars. Um, so I don't know where that, I don't know where that. Was so misquoted. I guess I would, um, you, you know, uh, going forward. This is the reason why we, you know, stress so much the multiple quote aspect. And, um, you know, would have, uh, would have definitely, it would have made a big difference on. The, that purchase or not that purchase because it wasn't a, uh, um, gotta have it now. It was, uh. It would be nice to have it now. Um, as far as our savings, uh. Doug, I don't know where you've come up with that savings. We talked long and hard about this. That the chassis was, you know, going to be around a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. The outfit was going to be the extra. So I don't know how we're saving the extra. We're, you know, I guess if we don't outfit it, we're saving the extra, but, um.
I could comment on that if you would, real quick. Sure. Page twelve four of the motor pool budget as approved by this commission. If you look at purchase of plow truck, number seventeen chassis, no box. That's itemized in the budget at a purchase of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the approved budget for this year. That was a chassis with no box. That was a quote I received from. The vendor around, they said it'd be around a hundred forty five to a hundred fifty thousand dollars based on tariff increases.
I, I respect that. I, I, the way I remember the conversation was that, that we were doing the complete outfit for a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Nope, that's not correct.
Okay. Um, uh, well, bottom line is, um, we need to do better on quotes. So we've had this discussion.
This was on me. This is not on McQueen. This was on me. I, I basically made the error. I didn't include two, I didn't mentally, this was a verbal quote I got from McQueen way back when. We're only going to get these attachments from McQueen, by the way. Um, these are for a very specialized piece of equipment that I had almost no, no experience with. These MT sevens, MT fives, never heard of a trackless before I came here, okay? They're used in this area. I made this mistake. I basically. In my previous draft version of the budget, did not include the two attachments. I included only one and I included a ballpark figure of twenty five to thirty thousand. I took the low number. This is my mistake. This, this pool, this account is totaled at two hundred and sixty, two thousand and five hundred dollars for these purchases of these few items out of the motor, motor pool account. And so what I'm saying is, in this note, we have an O bridge on the truck and that will definitely more than cover the. Way under a miss because I missed, I, I screwed this up.
What is the, what was that page number again, Doug?
Uh, it's on page twelve four in the motor pool section of the twenty five, twenty six.
Is there a total page number? Cause they don't have this broke down in sections.
Uh, sorry, I just have, I just have the twelve, four section for motor pool.
There's gotta scroll a little more.
Yes, total motor pool budget was two hundred sixty two thousand roughly.
Five hundred, yep, I see that. So replacement attracts trackless attachments, layers twenty two thousand five hundred. And then where is the savings? So the replacement of plow truck chassis, no box is a hundred and fifty?
Correct. We're going to be spending around one hundred and fifteen, I think. Well, that's if we have to pay for the tariff. One hundred thirteen, five, six, six. But we might be three, thirty nine hundred less than that if there's no tariff.
Okay, so, and I just want understanding from Commissioner Moody's question. The chassis was budgeted at one fifty with no outfit.
Correct.
Were paying one fifteen with no outfit fees. Thank you, sir.
Tim, would you back up on your, you, you, I'm sorry, you were throwing some, the budget number was two sixty two, five? And then what was the next one?
Yep, it's two sixty two, five, the total capital outlay.
And then the next number you gave in the budget?
The next number that I gave was, uh. Twenty two thousand five hundred, and that was a replacement for the two attachments that we are looking at right now.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't have my numbers in front of me, but I can tell you from basic memory. So the two sixty two, five with the adjustment on the plot, that truck to chassis, no box at one thirteen, one fourteen. I had rounded up to one seventeen, get the tariff comes through. There's a truck in there for fifty thousand and you've got the, you know, the increase in the playoff forty eight, seven thirty seven or something like that. When you shake that all loose, there's also Kubota tractor, uh, zero turn lawnmower in there. That the budget has it at forty and the most recent quote that he received is roughly twenty three thousand. When you put all that in bag and shake it out. What we come up with is there's going to be about seventy four thousand dollars still that were underneath that two sixty two, five. So let's say the truck is something that you get this year, that fifty, you've got about a twenty, you know, twenty seven thousand dollar pad. And if something happens, I already talked to him about, you know, do we push a truck off the next year? Because I'm a strong believer in, you set a budget number on a fine, you maintain that, you hold still on that unless something catastrophic occurs. So we'll look at the truck after everything else shakes out and ordered. With regards to the Kubota, I always believe in talking with the guys that are riding the tractor. Will this one, because I'd like to see if we get another year out of it. And they said, absolutely, we, we do need something this year and that is approved in the budget as well. Once the quotes are final, we'll be bringing that back to the commission.
Did you have anything else, Commissioner Moody?
No, good.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go this way, we'll go that way next, um. The, the only thing that I have written down here is I wanted to. Check that page number, but basically, thank you for finding and communicating your solution to the error and thank you for owning the error. We're all human and I appreciate you. Finding the solution that solves the error and bringing that, communicating that efficiently because it's an easy support for me. Um, the numbers are numbers, like John alluded to, I'm always going to be within the numbering, the numbers of the budget. Whether it's line items, account numbers, or the overall department. That's where my overall decision is always gonna lie within holding myself accountable to doing the budget sessions. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Farrell.
This piece of equipment that was obtained, uh. It's been sitting, so this will make it functional in terms of.
Hasn't been sitting, it's been used.
Has it? Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
But it, it was functional anyways with some of our other attachments.
So the.
But this flare mower is actually, the one we had is for the MT five. Little different plug and play options in terms of mating up with the MT seven. Now, we have MT sevens and MT five to sell, so we will get money back within this department when we sell the MT five.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Richard.
I sent Doug a side email coming into this meeting saying, I'm sorry, I'm pretty good with numbers, but trying to follow. All of this, um, was a challenge and I'm not sure that I'm to the bottom of it. We can flip out numbers of. What we had allocated for this, that, or the other thing. And I'm sorry, I, I, if. We're gonna talk about an impact to the budget, I wanna know what that means. Um, and that, that, if it means trading off a lawnmower, this or that, it needs to be a big picture discussion. Um, I, I, I guess, you know, uh. You and I talked about accessories before and making sure when we made the original purchase that we got all the bells, alarms, and whistles. I am delighted at the idea of being able to improve its utilization in a year-round basis for something other than. Snow. Um, I guess, you know, I, I, I'm struggling because I don't know the big picture impact all the way through. On, on the larger budget, but.
The, the impact will be at the end. What is the budget? What is the budget?
Since, well, these two sixty-two is what.
No, no, just in general, what is the budget?
I'm sorry?
What is the budget? I'm gonna start with that question. It's a, it's a guess at what you're gonna spend in that year, correct? That's what a budget is. This bucket of money that's allocated is two sixty-two, five. At the end of this budget year, which will be April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. My goal, the same as the mayor, is to go under this number with whatever purchases I need to make with for excitement within this department. And I can guarantee you, I will do that.
Okay, then I, I will take you at your word and at that, as I know, you know, you're good for it. And I, and that's the most important thing is that we are not. We always have also unforeseen circumstances that can come into play. So again, I don't have the budget page in front of me to be able to say, this is what we said we're gonna do, then to go remember, okay, and that was a. That was a ten must do, this was a, you know, a three or whatever. Not so important, but I trust you. And I trust your judgment.
I appreciate that.
And, you know, I will support it on that basis.
Go ahead, say one more, um, so. How long before the flare on lower is here, Doug?
I've already made a call on this, the, through the, I got the rush order of, hey, there's gonna be a tariff, blah, blah, blah. I wanted to get it pushed in before the tariff. We didn't have a manager, that didn't happen, whatever. We will get this flare mower in the very near future. They already had it basically on the show.
So I mean, so we're not doing any, are we still doing flare mowing?
Oh, excellent. Yeah, we can do it at the airport, we can do it on all the paths around town, we can do it on any edges, there's.
I mean, is it being done now?
Currently, no, we, we don't have, uh, the, the actual.
That goes to the.
To the MT five.
Yeah, so why can't we be doing it with the MT five?
We probably could, but.
Well, I mean, it's getting long, it's getting way more long than it was ever been in history.
So we, we de, more or less decommissioned the MT five, it's. We break it and it's not usable, we can't sell it. We have two MT sevens. You see what I'm saying? We now have two MT sevens, which are the newer version.
So we're not doing any flare mowing until sometime in July?
Uh, probably, if this is approved, this purchase will have it within a couple of weeks. It can be brought to us. The flare and the, the V plow, we're gonna save the shipping and get them both.
V plow will come here in November.
Yeah, exactly. So they're probably within a couple of weeks, yeah.
Thank you for reminding me, Marty. I guess I did have some commercial questions. Um, this quote does not speak to warranty. I don't know if there is a warranty on this kind of a moving object. Um, and the delivery specifically, um, because it doesn't speak to that at all. And I would, you spoke about the mixture of tip, uh, shipping and tariff. Ideally, not ideally, practically, they should be separate line items.
So they are. I'm, uh, correct. Look at the quote, tariff is actually the nine, the tariff fee as of June first, twenty-twenty-five, three thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
Page forty-six.
Okay, my bad.
No problem. That tariff is being imposed, own currently, that tariff is being imposed only on the flare mower. Is there a potential they could put, impose a tariff? On the V plow? Yeah, you better believe there is, cause tariffs are in, in, anywhere and everywhere right now.
No, I, I under, I appreciate that position. I'm hoping for the other way. I'm hoping for the other way.
This is come, one part of this boom flare comes way out of England, okay?
I gather.
So that's part of the reason, like, they had, they didn't wanna have to impose a tariff, but I said, alright, we're gonna get one tariff. Can you guys at least order the equipment so it's not in Canada anymore and you guys have it at least at McQueen? And they do, and they'll get it to us.
So there is potential that the, the, I mean, the tariff could go either way, but, you know, whatever. Anyway, delivery, uh, warranty, is there any warranty?
I'd have to look, but I'm sure it's.
It does not refer to any, and is there, and who is the purchase order issued to?
McQueen.
Not the, not the sales rep?
No, McQueen is the sales rep for, um, trackless.
Well, I'm looking at, thank you for considering Bell Equipment Company, so I'm confused by your equipment needs and then you listen, you listen, uh, Michael Clary.
Mike Clary is my contact through McQueen, yes. That's if we ever have service to the trackless, any type of, uh, issues with it. That's who we go to.
Who, so the purchase order will be issued to McQueen?
Yes, as far as I know.
He's probably.
It matters.
For McQueen.
I'd have to get an answer direct to that, but I'm, I'm pretty sure we go to McQueen. Cause that's who I'm looking at, who's on this quote dated, you know, June first. June second, sorry.
You're hearing me now. Contracts between two parties.
Yeah.
And who's, 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 who are we gonna enforce it if we have an issue? Bell, McQueen, or Michael?
I'd be McQueen. And Mike is, Mike Clary is who works from McQueen.
The purchase order needs to be written to the party that was holding warranty. Or accountable for its performance.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to award a contract to McQueen Equipment for the purchase of two attachments for the MT seven trackless municipal tractors. In the amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars per the bid proposal dated six-two, twenty-twenty-five. To authorize the city manager and city clerk treasurer to execute the necessary documents.
Support.
Friendly amendment. Now that we have an interim city manager, what would be the reason for including the city treasurer?
We've done it in the past, we can exclude her if you'd like, don't matter to me, I'm not hard one way or the other.
You just ask it.
I'm comfortable with it. Been doing it for three years. Support, is there a support?
There was a.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Uh, further discussion? Uh, real call please, Jessica.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Nana check.
Hi.
The motion's carried.
Thank you, this next one is you, well done.
Yes. Uh, this is for the contractor role for cross-connection, cross-control connection with the company HydroCorp. Uh, since the inception of Long City's cross-connection program in December of two thousand, the city has utilized external contractors. To perform these required services. Uh, since early twenty-twenty-one, HydroCorp has held the contract and had effectively fulfilled the program's requirements. HydroCorp also provided these services for the city in previous years, previous years with consistent successes. Uh, to ensure compliance with updated Eagle, which is, uh, Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy regulations, the number of required inspections has increased from forty to forty-five annually. HydroCorp has adjusted accordingly to meet this mandate and had kept Point City within compliance. Uh, HydroCorp has demonstrated strong performance, being both responsive and timely. And continues to offer critical services that would otherwise require additional city staff to implement. And their work remains a valuable asset to our community. HydroCorp has submitted a proposal to continue providing these services for an additional two-year term at a cost of. Thirteen-six-ninety-one, twenty-five for the two years. This cost is included in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget under the following line item. As you can see, it's under contracted services there in the water department. My recommendations that the city commission approve the proposal from HydroCorp and authorize the city manager. Uh, to sign the two-year renewal contract in the amount of thirteen thousand, six ninety-one and twenty-five cents.
Thank you, sir. Going to the public for public comment, questions, or concerns? Uh, then a close public comment and go to the board for deliberation. Um, I think I started with everyone first except for me. Um, so I'll go first this time. Um, Doug. Completely understand, I read through this, I'm in full support, um. Possibility for additional bids, question mark? What is the possibility of getting additional bids?
Uh, pretty slim. We, the city did this game before, this song and dance before I was here. Uh, with my predecessor, they had some other company that wasn't HydroCorp. And then they learned a valuable lesson. Up two years into that three-year contract, hey, we're, we're up, you don't want nothing to do with you guys, sorry, pulled them up shop. And guess who the city went with after that? Who they previously had before Meads or whatever the name of that company was, they went back to HydroCorp. So, uh, up to you guys, we can, we can go down that road again and try some, uh, mom and pop shop company, whatever, that could offer this service. Not, not be my recommendation. If we go with the gold standard, which is HydroCorp. Which, as you can tell by this very thorough proposal, they're, they're one of the biggest mistakes.
Doug, the reason why I asked the question is because I think every single commissioner in the last four years that I've been in this room, they've always asked for. Multiple bids.
Mm-hmm.
And I know there are moments in times when multiple bids aren't reasonable or plausible. And whoever up there easily, effectively, and efficiently communicates through. Why there's only one bid, and that's all I was looking for when I asked the question, if there's a possible, if you get additional bids. Um, I, I could speak to why it's been my consistent expectation to look at multiple bids in four years. And hope that the other commissioners touch on it when they get a moment to speak. The reason why I like to is because it allows me the opportunity to establish competitive bids. When I'm just looking at one and only one, I don't know if thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars is a good deal or not. And I don't know if two grand for my, my mom and pop shop that, like you referenced it, um, is too good of a good deal. Um, this might be too good of a good deal, but I only got this one, so that's why I personally consistently for four years. Have always asked for additional bits with the understanding and the acknowledgement, knowing that in certain situations. It will not be applicable, reasonable, or plausible to get multiple bids. Um. The other thing that I've been consistent in when looking at these, when these. Types of contracts are constantly renewing, tree removal and tree planting has been one of them where I've always looked at the historical expense. So the question I have for you is, do you know what the prior tenure of that contract was? And what the cost was, just so then I can compare historical, um, expenses.
Not off the top of my head, but I could get that pretty easily, yes.
Okay.
Like, uh, in terms of the increase from HydroCorp over year over year, or?
Yeah, well, this is a contract for what, two years? Yeah, correct. So for two years, we're gonna pay thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Correct.
I see here that we're having an increase from forty to forty-five annually required inspections. So I'm sure it's gonna go up a little bit and that's what I'm expecting. If I did look at the historical expense.
Yes.
And if I was looking at it last, last two-year contract, I would assume would be probably be lower than the thirteen because they did.
It was reasonable. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it was a reasonable percentage increase.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks, sir. Uh, I will, Commissioner Farrell.
I had the same question in terms of what it was to what it's going to be, uh, but, um, overall, it's not an. Unusual expense item. Especially given the magnitude of what we're expecting them to, to do and to certify for us, so. I, I don't have any questions beyond that. Competitive bids always are, are better when, when they're available, but. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to be echoing Tim in the multiple bids. I spent a significant portion of my career in purchasing. And I frequently would heard, heard there's only one somebody. And that's rarely the case, um, and it is important to continue to search out. Uh, worthy, what I call worthy competitors, if that's the case. And my question was, one of my questions was also the same, is when would these folks last with us?
Their, uh, the current contract, I think, is up at the end of July.
And they've been. How long is their current contract been in place? Two years?
Two years, correct.
Two years. So we're going into our second two-year period.
Correct.
Um, therefore I found it.
Total of, this will be, no, this, this.
It's not a fourth year.
Yeah, well, if we renew for two, yes, we would gain another two on top of the two.
So it's, we're in the auto renew. Is that my following?
Kind of, yes.
Well, he's, they've got a phrase in here that says that the twenty, contract amount is twenty-four month term and shall renew in twelve-month increments.
Yes.
Where are we at then?
Uh, we're at the end of two years, I believe. I'd have to check when the last time we signed this contract.
Well, this is an important thing to pay attention to as we continue to administer this contract. Is that we have an auto renew clause, they have sixty-day notice and that locks us behind, so that, that's interesting to me. But what was also very interesting to me, and I think these guys may be absolutely the best in the world, which is great. When you go to your page fifty-two at the top. Once this project has been approved and accepted by Point City, you may expect completion of the following elements within a twenty-four month period. And it lists a variety of normal things, which would be the sampling and. You're gonna develop a list, I would gather, of the forty you're gonna do per year, or forty-five you're gonna do per year. But there are some other very important things that are in here that are of extreme value to us. And if they've been providing service to us. Then I would expect some of this would have been complete. And specifically, when I honed in, and that I thought was pretty interesting. And of great value is on page fifty-two, um, it, it, it speaks to. Developing procedures. Written documentation. Work instruction kinds of things. Do we have those from our, their previous contracts with us?
I'm not following. My page fifty-two shows scope of work.
Go to one-three or one-four program data. They speak to. Review and revise procedures.
One-dash-one.
So I'm paying, okay, one-point-three you're talking?
It, 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 throughout the body of deliverables under this, it is not just sampling plans, which is important. It is a critical piece, but what equally is important is organization building. And, and actually having things on the shelf that when you have personnel turnover or, or, or you can go here. Here's our procedures book. And it implies that if they've been with us for a while, that should exist, does it?
A procedures book?
Yes.
One, one-five, Doug, management reports, company will submit.
Yes, they submit the reports. Portably.
But look it back at one-one, program review and program startup. Uh, there is a number of pieces of data.
Bullet. Review and establish procedures and protocols for addressing specific hazards. Do we have a city-owned handbook of these procedures?
Yes, we do.
And, and so they'll continue to.
Every city, every municipal city in the entire state of Michigan and in this entire country has a cross-connect program, okay? The, the question is, can we do it in-house or do we farm it up?
I understand. I guess we're, we're talking about deliverables for the service. So back to that point, which I think is also great. Did we ever do this inside before?
Uh, to my knowledge, no, this has never been done.
Okay, so this is an adjunct because we reduced headcount over time and.
That you are correct.
And big, in a big way.
From about seven staff to about three.
And I think that's, that's worthy of, that's worthy of this council's discussion, um, going forward. Partly why I'm, I'm, I'm touching on this. So they are the ones that are performing the work now. That we're extending the contract that is in existence. Um. We don't know the last contract amount, but we expect it's higher because there's five more plus, plus, plus. Um, we don't have additional bids. Their commercial terms, um, I, I gather, are these, is the same, is the commercial terms that we had previously?
Yes.
So the same boilerplate. I'm very happy to see in their addendum that. On page fifty, in their addendum, they remove. Um, the requirement for the city of Point City naming them as an additional insurer. So that would, that, that, I'll leave it at that. There are many other things that. We ought not to be doing, but. We are, but that's one biggie and the liability is removed from Point City, so. On the page sixty addendum, so I can be happy with that. Uh, one question, how do you decide which, where to spend your forty-five or ninety, um, inspections?
It's, uh, businesses basically. That's the business, that's what was, that's what's mandated for right now is area businesses, local businesses.
Not any residential situations, no schools?
That might be coming down the pike.
No, well, but it's, it speaks to schools, for example, and other, other public health potential.
Our facilities, parks, separate things. We have, to answer your question on the, uh, whatever eye disease or whatever you're trying to allude to on the splash pad, there's cross controls out there. Cross-connection controls. There are backflow preventers. There are people in the city who are not qualified to test those.
That's right.
So that's why we have to farm those types of things out. So, uh, our, our community doesn't have to worry about, uh, contamination at a a public use of a, of a splash pad, for example, because we have implemented programs like this.
So the implementation date will be effective eight-one?
Correct.
Okay, and I would again ask you to put a tickler in your calendar for at least sixty days in advance of that so that we don't have an auto-renew issue.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Every commissioner got a chance to speak. Do you go, Moody?
Uh, no, but I, I, I'm fine. The only thing that I will respectfully disagree with that this is something that we would, this is a hundred and fifty dollars a test. Uh, you know, I don't, we would never recoup that through hiring someone to do this.
You can do it temporarily for less than.
Yeah, so.
I agree. You cannot hire a part-timer to mow grass for this.
Well, I'm fine. Other than, you know, again, what was stated on, uh, bids, so.
I'm making motion that the city commission approve the proposal from Hydro Corp and authorize the city manager to sign the two-year renewal contract in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents. It's four. Uh, further discussion? Roll call please, Jessica.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Emma Check.
Hi.
Fair.
Hi.
While she carried.
Thank you.
So I'm just touching base. We got four agenda items in front of us. It's ten o'clock. We're three hours in. Um, so let's keep hammering out. I really like for them to set three hours, um, but we'll just keep on trucking. Ten C, C-Doc power update. Let's go on.
Oh, it has my bedtime.
You're back.
Okay, so during the punchless walkthrough with Adam Marsh, Mullen, Rotation Doggy System and Charlotte County, it was discovered that the C-Docs emergency electrical stops, the E-Docs, E-stops don't make code. Um, so Kevin from the county, he approved the temporary solution that Wagner put in for us to run power to D-Doc. The D-Doc's good, it's on. But he said without the E-stops on C-Doc, we cannot safely run power. So it could not be turned on. There is no power running to C-Doc right now. Um, the T-Doc, A-Doc, C-Doc, whatever it is, okay? It is also short in the stop. However, that one is currently safe to run with what it has. So they have to have an E-stop every fifty feet. You have to be able to reach it fifty feet in whatever slip you're at. Um, so Wagner sent us these quotes, um, and it would bring up, to bring up both docs to code, we can get two E-stops for C-Doc and they would go on new pedestals within that fifty-foot radius. And then we'd also get one E-stop on A-Doc and an existing dock-mounted fire hut. Um, they'd be wired to the boaters that, that boater's building, um, right there at the marina for the temporary power and then connected to permanent sources once we receive those sometime in August. Um, and that would ensure we are compliant with NEC. So that total, that dock C would be twenty-seven, twenty-six and dock A would be forty-seven, ninety-two. Um, the reason dock A is more expensive, which you'll see in his quote, is because it has a longer distance he has to run the wire. So that's why that one is more expensive, even though it only has one E-stop. Uh, so that total would be seventy-five, eighteen. And then city staff are working to determine, to determine the responsible party for payment. So if it is determined that Boeing City is not responsible for that payment, then we will work to get that money back, but to ensure that the dock is safe and available, we need to have those E-stops on there.
Thank you. Going to the public for public comment, questions, comments and concerns? I'll go to the board deliberation. Start with Commissioner Farrell.
From the material that I reviewed, um, E-stops were part of the original, um, I guess an amended, wasn't a part of the original, but from the amendments, I saw that there were additions for those.
Martin, online, um, from Evan Marsh. What he said was, it was on the original drawing from H-E-D, however, they were not included in any drawing that went out to bid. So.
So yeah, that's.
You got that reversed. He said, the not-for-construction electrical plans by H-E-D, which was used for initial bidding and dated six-four-twenty-four, did not include these E-stop buttons. But then he found electrical plans in the addendum dated seven seventeen.
Sorry, I was backwards. I'm sorry.
Yep. So I'm for moving forward, but I wanna hold them as the contractor accountable for, because this is their line of work. They know this. We shouldn't have to tell them their job or have the inspector find it. So I'm a little disappointed in that and I don't know if Martin had anything to add to the conversation about, um, about it not being done. Because they had to sign off on their work at the completion.
Yeah, so, um, they did not. They signed off in that it's significantly complete, but not entirely complete on the project. So when we did our walkthrough, it has not been, it will not be completed until all of those parts are in. So they haven't signed off on it.
Okay.
If I may kind of speak to this a little bit, um, yes, correct about the not-for-construction electrical plans being used for initial bidding on June fourth, but then the addendum number one dated seven seventeen didn't include, include those red revision bubbles. The contractor pushed back on us a little bit because they were curious that we didn't have those emergency stops in there, but we did see that we, that was provided to them, so they would have seen it. So I'm in the position that the contractor should pay for this cost. Um, although I understand they had to do the quote-unquote temporary solution to provide power to D-Doc at their expense. Um, I can defer this payment, um, for them to pay, but I suspect maybe getting some pushback. And, um, that's just kind of where we're at for that, but it was included in the original plans. That was the intent to have those in. Obviously, it was a miss from either the contractor or somewhere along the lines.
An intentional miss, and that concerns me more.
Yes.
So this is their, their line of work.
Right.
Okay. I didn't have anything else.
Okay. Um. So, yeah, this was confusing to me. John brought this up in a conversation when I was having John. He asked me questions about this. Um, I did go back. I looked and verified the addendum. I'm in full support and I will really, uh, only be in full support depending on how this, uh, motion is made. Um, I appreciate the recommended motion here in front of us. Um, I would be in support of an amendment to this recommended motion to include some of the above wording, and that's the very first, uh, paragraph, the two, two sentences above that. That's basically stating city staff are working to determine the responsible party for payment. Boeing City is not responsible for payment. Efforts will be made to recoup the full cost. I'm under the impression, the assumption and the understanding at this point in time right now that Boeing City is not responsible for payment. Um, so I'm not expecting us to eat this. Um, and Martin, I know you're on the line. I've read through this email. You're redlining items here. And in that conversation with John, I really appreciate it because, um, it basically took the words out of my mouth and I'll allude to them and have John hold me accountable. So I don't miss the context in that conversation, but basically at one point in time, H-E-D was brought into the conversation by Arvin Mosh. This was their very first marina. Um, and these E-stops are to code. And if they're licensed electrician, electrician doing projects up to code, um, this is on them. And if it's not on them, then I'm gonna push back in a harder direction on Arvin Mosh and why they would feel it would be appropriate to have a novice, first-time electrical company um, be their subcontractors for this. And that brings, uh, concern from that aspect. So I just highlight that in the conversation. Um, with that being said, I'm in support of getting this done. I, I don't wanna read a funny article in the newspaper, um, about the delayed opening of the marina. So I'm in support of getting this moving forward. I am also in support of holding accountability where accountability is deserving of being held. Um, Commissioner Moody?
Yeah, uh, I, I agreed with everything's been, um, in full support of moving this forward. Again, I don't believe, uh, this is our cost. And then speaking with the city manager um, about it, I, I, I feel comfortable that, um, he's gonna hold parties accountable and, and we'll get it taken care of. So uh, need to move on with it and get it, uh, finalized and, uh, and then we. Okay.
Commissioner Preacher.
I'd like to not have this show back up on our agenda again in the future. Um, I, I think it's clear where the accountability lies. Yes, we need to fix it. But it begs the question why we would, as a city, be in a position of having to make this decision to pay as it boils to? Let me understand, first of all, the contract. We, we retained Avon Marsh. Who? Did Mullen hire H-E-D?
No.
Mark, I'm sorry?
No, no. That's right. So I'm gonna hold them. I'm gonna push harder to hold Arvin.
Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm in a situation where we just got done. I, I would prefer, I would prefer that this issue stay in the, the ledger of Avon Marsh. That we authorize the action to go purchase the E-stops and that this amount is withheld from the Avon Marsh, um, payment. Then it's off our deck and we don't have it show up again in another agenda item. And then they can work it out however they need to work it out.
That's for them.
Bob?
I think what we're trying to do here is to move this forward and then have the city be reimbursed for it. We want Mullen to move forward today, not three weeks now. So.
Wagner has the E-stops. He ordered them. He is ready to install them on Friday, if we give the go-ahead.
Is he expecting payment?
I don't know.
It's receiving, Martin, is he receiving payment through you, through Arvin Mosh?
No, Wagner is a subcontractor to Mullen. Mullen is a prime contractor for contract one.
All right. The reason I asked that question, Martin, was because two other change orders that come in here and they're a total of fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. The two other ones are Mullen as well.
Yeah.
So I'm still gonna come back to the, I appreciate, we need to put these, get these things installed. It's not our problem. It's not our error. It's, they are a sub to Mullen. Let Avon Marsh work it out. And withhold all fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars from any payment that we make in the future. If we have to go write a check, I, I don't think we should. As far as I'm concerned, Avon Marsh can go scramble and make them write the check. These three together are fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and they all fall in the lap of Mullen. Ultimately, Avon Marsh, but Mullen. That's why I'm looking at, the way I'm looking at it. So how would this?
I would point out that the T-Doc connection, which is the next agenda item.
That's what she said.
Is, is outside of the scope.
So, so the.
Then take it back.
We're really, yeah, we're looking at.
So the, like the cleats and the steps.
Those are mandatory right now.
The wire, the, the final one was.
Martin, do you understand what's being proposed right now by the city commission?
I'm looking at agenda item ten C, so that's with respect to the C-Doc and A-Doc electrical E-stops that are required. The other items are the next topic of discussion, but as it relates to this topic, I feel that the contractor should be responsible for doing this. It should have been included in their plan. I mean, we had evidence that addendum number one had that revision bubble, which shows these emergency E-stops. So I don't think it was a miss. We have worked with H-E-D, although a different project manager for other marina projects, but for this project, we didn't have the opportunity to work with that person who's no longer at H-E-D. So we've had some previous working relationships, um, be- before with H-E-D, although for this project, we had some other project manager and it just so happened this was his first marina project, although he'd been working on several other electrical projects, um, that aren't marinas. Anyways, little, little bit of backstory there, but I want to have the contractor pay this cost as best we can. Uh, if Avon Marsh has to negotiate with them, then we're happy to do that. Um, the scope did include the improvements to C-Doc and the A-Doc, which is also known as T-Doc, um, because it looks like a T. And I will approach Wagner to see about getting this paid. But I understand the intent is to activate C-Doc at minimum tomorrow or soon.
Yeah, we're gonna move forward on the other ones, Martin, but I don't think you're gonna get the commission to move forward on this one for that seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. I think what's being indicated by the commission is we all feel it's not the responsibility of the commit, of the city. Um, this wasn't on us. This was an error on even the party that you're indicating, which is H-E-D. You, even as the engineer, have stated multiple times, you don't understand why they have missed it. They've been provided with the information. Um, it shouldn't have been missed from the aspect of they need to build it as a licensed electrician to code and to be to code, it would require those E-stops. Um, so I guess this commission does not wanna release seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars. They want to withhold that either from you as the engineering firm or have you as the engineering firm hold that from Mullen, which would then trickle that down to Mullen, holding that from H-E-D. Are you following the conversation?
Yes.
Enforcing movement by the end of the week.
Yeah, the bottom line is we're, we're not holding up the fact that it needs to be done and it needs to be completed. If, uh, if it doesn't, if you don't wanna complete, then they're not getting paid for anything.
Right.
Contract, contract wasn't fulfilled.
And that's kind of back to my original statements is who I will be holding accountable the most will be Arvin Mosh. Cause the relationship is ultimately between the city of Boeing City and Arvin Mosh. Um, you as the engineer have gone out and subbed and allowed your subs to sub. Um, and unfortunately, your sub chose the novice sub, um, and they missed this. I don't think it's in the best interest of the city for us to fork out the seventy-five, eighteen. Um, from my personal experience, the moment you sign a check, you send the check, it's the hardest check to fight back, to get back. Um, so I'm in support in not sending the check. But we would need your assurance as Arvin Mosh, that you guys are going to continue to move forward with the requirement that H-E, well, Wagner installs these with the expectation that you will be withholding the funds from Mullen, which then would be withholding those funds from the sub.
Tell, put it in the form of motion.
Um, so I would make a motion.
I mean, we need the work done. We're, we're not.
We direct it.
We're directing the work to be done. You, you either do the work.
Complete the work for.
Or you don't get paid any.
I'll make a motion that the city commission authorize city clerk and/or city manager to execute the necessary documents and approve Wagner Electric's quote for the purchase and installation of dock C, two E-stops added to new pedestals within fifty feet required radius and dock A, one E-stop added to existing dock mounted fire hut in an amount not to exceed seven thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars to be paid by Arvin Mosh and/or Mullen and/or H-E-D. It's four. Further discussion?
Could you repeat that if you can, Jessica? Without the, I mean, the last part. So we're, we're, we're authorizing. The purchase. Of e-stops by. Okay. Alright.
We can't, we can't make a motion that encovers somebody else.
I would make it.
Well, then I'll, I'll change the motion to withhold seven thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars in total from Arvin Mosh.
We have discussion?
It's still.
I don't, okay, so, so I guess one, I don't even know that this requires a motion. To instruct Avon Marsh to address this matter and remedy it immediately. Providing whatever funding is necessary to their subcontractors to preserve. Friday. June.
Thirteen.
Thirteenth implementation.
I agree, it doesn't need to be a motion, but there needs to be a consensus at the minimum that that's the task that we're.
Are you very comfortable with that? John?
I, there is problems within covering. You know, Wagner, if. We're gonna sign a contract with Wagner, but he's the one. We contracted with, we're responsible for that debt. If we, if you approve. The price proposal is to Boyne City. So if we agree that proposal, he's gonna do the work, but. I think the easiest thing is with exactly what you said, if you commission says. We're gonna pay it. And we're gonna log it and the, the next payment that goes out to Avon Marsh is gonna be deducted by the seven thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. Well, we've rolled out the payment and, and Avon Marshall then. Either go to Molon, who will go to the contractors, but at that point. We're withholding the funds, so we're just paying it early, withholding it on the next draw.
Right.
And they'll work out where they're gonna collect it from.
Another, another option, I guess I, I, I think. You, you've done awesome things to try and resolve this. Everyone of the staff have spent time, effort and energy to do this. What is to say now that you have it to the, the, this point? That Molon, or excuse me, Wagner can't issue a quote. Just change the words, so who is addressed to, to Avon Marsh and have them execute.
Okay, you could, but here's a question for you from, or uh, Mr. Beavis. Change your quote tomorrow. And then Avon Marsh is gonna go back and go, yeah, we're not signing that. We're gonna dispute it. We'll figure it out. And then we're out of e-stop for another week. So the easiest way is.
Just pay it.
We have money, we have money going to them. And we'll just withhold per commissions directly.
Agreed, yeah. Don't be surprised, uh, Martin.
I don't think he is.
Yep. No, so yeah, I mean, so I will put that into motion, rescind that motion. Did anyone support that motion? Okay, so since it wasn't supported, I can rescind it. I'll make a motion that the city commission authorized city clerk and or city manager to execute the necessary documents and approve Wagner electrics. Quote for the purchase and installation of dock C, two e-stops added to new pet- pedestals within fifty feet required radius. And dock A, one e-stop added to existing dock mounted fire hut. An amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and to withhold a total sum of seven thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars from Arvin Mosh. Further discussion? Uh, roll call please, Jessica.
Uh, Richard.
Hi.
Nimitzak.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Motion's carried.
Okay, moving on to C dock cleats. Um, I'm just gonna read through this real quick. During operation in the marina, it was discovered C dock does not have concrete mounted cleats on the fixed docks. These are necessary for larger boats to tie their boats off safely. Marina staff discovered that cleats were not reinstalled on the fixed. C docks during construction. The quoted price included below. Includes parts, installation and labor. Dock cleats fifteen inches nineteen times one hundred and sixty-five equals three thousand one hundred and sixty-five. City staff are working to determine the responsible party for payment and if Boyne City is not responsible for payment, efforts will be made to recoup the full cost. The recommended motion is to move forward with authorizing for the expense of three thousand one thirty-five. Um, would you like to add anything, Ralph or Jen?
Um, just that one of our, one of our boaters said when he was down there talking with the construction crew, they said, oh. Um, when they had pulled out the concrete, they were talking about cleats and he said that, yeah, they were to be included. And when they put it back.
I'm sorry, they were what?
They were supposed to be included when they put it back.
Martin, can we confirm that? That was.
So. Good question. I looked at the plans and from the old C dock, each of the fixed piers has a concrete abutment. Which uh, it's pretty significant and we didn't want them to remove that, cause that would have been some cost. And uh, we missed putting the cleats on the sidewalk. Just gonna be honest with you. My intention or my, my thought was that the existing abutments that support those fixed docks on C dock. Had cleats on there, which that wasn't the case. So simply Avon Marsh did not. Put the cleats on C dock as we should have in the plans and there's, I didn't see that was mentioned in the addendum. Uh, so that's, that's a miss on Avon Marsh, sorry.
So is this, so is it a, a simple expectation that this three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars is gonna be covered by Arvin Mosh?
I think the evidence points to Avon Marsh having to put the bill for it, yes.
I, I think we were the motion in the exact same way and so we worded the other one.
Um, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Pritchard, we'll start with you.
Give up.
Okay, Commissioner Moody.
I just said it.
Yeah, I'll make a recommendation that the city commission authorized the city clerk and city manager to execute the necessary documents. And approve the quote from Molon excavating for the purchase and installation of nineteen. Dock cleats in an amount not to exceed three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and to withhold a total sum of three thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars from. Arvin Mosh. Support. Further discussion? Roll call please, Jessica.
Nimitzak.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Agenda item ten E. During construction, it was noted that water to the pedestals on T dock is inoperable. Discussion, T dock has never had water service, however, it is set up for water with spigots at the pedestals, which makes the boater's question why there isn't water. While beyond the scope of contracts one and two, a quote included to connect T dock. Water services while construction crews are already on site was requested by Harbor Master Ralph. Ralph and Jen, would you like to add anything to that?
Um, no, this has been, you know, it's been an ongoing situation that should have been done within the T dock was constructed, but it. Never happened. So we'd have to, you know, drag garden hose out there to boats. You know, a hundred feet of garden hose and try to hook them up someplace. It's just very unprofessional.
But the pedestal's already out there with this, I mean, it looks like it was prepped for water when they were put in.
Plus, from a fire standpoint, there's a station out there where they should be able to hook up fire hoses on shore. And then hook one out on the T dock and there's no, there's no water.
Okay, easy decision. Thank you. Uh, going to the public for public comment, questions, concerns? Going to the board for deliberation?
If I were not a little bit crispy in my own brain, I would have suggested that um. The. The swap with Molon would be. You put in the cleats for three thousand hundred and, you know, fifteen dollars at your cost. And the thirty-five hundred dollars is swap and nobody owes anybody anything. Do the damn work.
I've got more of a design question, um. Martin, did you put in uh, A dock?
T.
Or. He's calling it A.
Um, the A dock, T dock, the same one, yes. Um, that was originally outside of the scope to my understanding for the project. Cause we were looking at C dock and D dock and going back to the design.
Can it support, support both infrastructure requirements for both fire and uh, regular water?
I, yes, I, I would say yes to that question. Um, the fire suppression system is different than the pressurized potable water.
Right.
And there is a new water main now. Previously, under the phase one project. Um, which was a different scope to begin with. It was pooling water from the existing building. And there was supposed to be from that phase one project from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, there was an expansion of the marina north. Which facilitated more of a water, like a bigger pipe basically. So what they have now currently is a four inch uh, pipe. And it's been capped off and this cost would be to run power to supply or run water. Um, to those pedestals on that T A dock.
I don't wanna have a water feature on the waterfront. Connected and it doesn't go anywhere.
Yes.
Um, the only question I got, Martin and Jen and Ralph is. In this, it talks about capping the damaged section on T dock.
I'm not sure what that's you referring to. That's the first side.
Okay, cause it is quoted in the quote as well. It says. Connect T dock water service and cap damage section. So Martin, Ralph and.
Yeah.
Jen seem a little lost. So can you walk us through what the city commission and staff members should be expecting when. We have the completion of cap damage section on T dock?
Good question. So that is, I think, talking about the gap between the land and where it goes to the floating dock. Underneath the gangway, there's a raceway where the flexible hose goes underneath. Uh, I talked with Cody Carmichael about this from F D S and he explained it to me. That there has been some ice damage underneath the gangway, raceway, causing some of those to detach. So I believe that's the location of where um, they can't simply reuse what was existing from a couple of years ago. They'd have to. Replace that damaged section. And I think that's. Um, there's a cap through the penetration of the abutment. Uh, where that four inch water service is from the land side. And I believe that's where the phase one. Had ended and they just put a cap on there. I, I, I'm not sure the condition of it, but if that's. You know, it's a very generic item description, just a one line item description, but. I can certainly provide or get some more information on it, but that's the number that we were given for that.
Ralph, does that sound like that rectifies, that rectifies most of the damage on T dock?
Well. Well, that's a, well, for that portion of it, there's, there's a huge amount of other damage on T dock that we have to address.
Okay, is this, is this addressing though the issue that? The previous city manager was tasked with last year to get quotes for and to repair?
I don't know if that ever, ever happened, to be honest with you.
I can answer that. Yes, I, not this commission, I told you that's, is your quote rather in town? I got you a quote. I recently forwarded it to John. He has, he has it in his email. Uh, quote, I received from Cody Carmichael for thirty-three thousand dollars to repair current condition of the T dock right now.
Is any portion of that flow including this damage?
You know, I reviewed it. He gave a big picture bio and I believe there was some stuff about that line. So maybe we repaired this, remember you said for the two thousand, we have to talk to Cody about that.
Right, okay. Uh, if you went, Farrell, go ahead, Commissioner Moody.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, that thing Sandy said it best in the beginning. If, if this is, if this ends up being, you know, something that uh. Um, falls in our lap, fine, we, we need to move on with it. If it, if it helps the same, you know, a couple of dollars. When we finally get there with Cody, then that's fine too. But a- again, it's, you know, this has been, this has been a mess. We just keep peace, you know, trying to get all the pieces put into place to make it the way it should be. So. Uh, again, I, I'm even fine with the way, you know, Sandy said it, but we've already put the other two in place. So now. I got no problem with this one being on us and we'll leave it to John to, you know, negotiate with Cody and see how, how everything shakes out.
Commissioner Richard?
I will support. My consummate frustration is building. Because these, these are project management one O ones and when I have. To go and issue an email about putting caution tape around a pit. Is disgusting to me. It's, it's ineptitude beyond imagination on the heels of being asked for. Twenty-seven thousand dollars for additional program management fees because they missed that. In the past and I, I, I am alarmed. That we find ourselves in this place. I want to offer deep gratitude to each member of the staff. For everything that you've done to try and shore this up. Because it's a burden that we're paying the big bucks for that you shouldn't have to deal with. So I'm grateful for you. I am so grateful for you and thank you for that.
With that, you're gonna make a motion?
You do it.
I'll make a motion, consider to author, consideration to authorize the city clerk treasurer, city manager to execute the necessary documents. And approve the quote from Molon excavating to connect T dock. Water and cap damage section in the amount not to exceed thirty-five hundred dollars and advise city manager to uh. Establish any cost savings with uh. Yeah, F D S, yeah, thanks.
Support.
The only friendly amendment that I was gonna ask is for a, a complete analysis of repairs done for cat damage section from Arvin Mosh. Cause I want, I don't want us to miss this as we move forward with. Um, addressing that. I want a clear understanding of what they're repairing at this.
Well, that's why I left it to Jen.
And to that point, Commissioner Nimitzak, I can ask for an itemized quote that helps to provide some more. Information about it. This is just the numbers that we got from Molon, who they coordinated with their plumber and I'm not. Uh, quite frankly, I'm not familiar with all the details of that quote.
Yeah, we, we definitely need to understand the services that are being provided for those repairs. It's definitely because we're looking at quotes that are including those, that damage and additional quotes that will be picked.
Mayor, I'd also comment that if you think back over. I know my engagement, even though officially or unofficially, it's been five years. We didn't see, remember these, like, these kinds of items were never brought to us. Avon Marsh dealt with them. Properly. Before it even came to us. So.
We thought so.
I guess I have to ask, um. That we also get a, 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 a quote or situation analysis on the cramped electrical conduit. In the pit. At some point. It's unrelated to the motion, but it's just one more thing. The photos I sent you guys.
Hold on one second, Martin.
Okay.
There's a second on the floor. We need to vote on it.
Yep. Roll call please, Jessica.
Nimitzak.
Hi.
Farrell.
Hi.
Moody.
Hi.
Richard.
Hi.
Motion's carried.
Go ahead with whatever you're about to uh, say, Martin.
Oh, this was about the damaged conduits. I've already spoke with the contractor. They're gonna go and um. Put some caution tape out there in the next couple of days. Um, that's up to them to replace in kind. Uh, those conduits that, that were damaged. It looks like someone fell in there or something. I'm not sure, but I'm sorry to hear that. I did communicate those uh, those pits that. That you mentioned should have been marked off by the contractor. I talked with them and they said that Wagner was gonna do that, but. It got lost in the shuffle. Sorry about the confusion there. Um, we can do our best to make sure it doesn't happen again, but totally we're in the wrong for that. So thanks for bringing that up. But it's getting worked out. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. For being available so late. Uh, moving on to ten F, Willow Tree Removal. Um. So, let's try and dance through this conversation. Um, Gao, thank you again for. Offering, um. I'm just gonna try and lead us through this conversation the best that I can without a memory.
Are we just gonna have it re-discussed? I think we already. Already heard it.
Oh, wait, you go. You lead us through the conversation.
I.
I'll, I'll think, I'll think it great. Go ahead, Murray.
I'm just saying, I mean, I, I. Do, do we need to hear from Dr. Gao again? I mean, the man's here. Thanks for saying, Gao. I said, I, I respect his opinion before, um, you know, again, we've established. You know, we've established plausible. Thoughts. If something happens, so there is no turning back. I'm sorry on this one. There is zero turning back. Um, the uh, you, you know, we're gonna open ourselves up to the biggest lawsuit the city has ever seen. If anything were to happen. I respect what Gao said that, you know, there may be some, you, you know, widow makers hanging out there. I'd love to know. If anything were to happen. I respect what Gao said that, you know, there may be some, you you know, widow makers hanging out there. I'd love to know about those, Gao. Well, I don't know that we would wanna know about this, but. That's a sticky wicked too, you know, but I mean, if there's aspects that you think that need to be trimmed, then we need to hear about it. But I mean, on this one, the the cat's out of the bag. There, I you know, there's nothing that can be done. I already said it. I'll shut up now because there's no sense in prolonging this meeting for another hour. So I'll pass it on to whoever wants to go on.
Um, I pre- again, appreciate your offer. I I it was by circumstance that they that I was driving. I was driving by and the guy had. This rod, I don't know, it was four feet long or or whatever, literally watching it doing this in the tree. I'm like. Wow, that's weird. And then this came up on our agenda. It it looked massively soft on the inside. So. It it does beg a question. You got it nine years um this far. Um, and I understand how you had to prune deeply in order to give it potential life. What do you expect you could get?
You know, potentially another ten. I I was trying to be conservative, you know, nine years ago. Uh. That I know of a uh, maybe you all know of it too, but at like number seven Beach Drive in Harbor Springs. There was one much like this that lasted over a hundred years. So, you know, but we we would typically uh. Review that incrementally. So I wouldn't say, oh, it'll go twenty more years. We we don't know, but um, I think it could have substantial life. Um, the the fact that it's hollow, you know. I'm certain it was probably hollow eight years ago when we lost fifteen trees. Uh, they all blew over the best trees in the whole park. No one could have predicted. None of them were hollow, but well, maybe the hollow one that stayed. And it's it's much like the engineering principle of a solid rod. Or, you know, in construction, we use tubular things with, you know, eighth inch wall thickness. And yet it's. When you demonstrate which is stronger, you know, there there's negligible difference, you know, between the two. And that's why we go with with tubular. So the the two forces at work are reactive and compressive, and we really don't care the strength in the shell. A tree, there's there are self preserving organisms. So as they're uh finding decay and hollow. They strengthen in the exterior, you know, we're we're not relying upon the center. At one time, I used to buy nursery stock uh in for many years on the West Coast. And one time I was inside a hollow tree. That was, it was a gift shop, little coffee thing. It was a coastal uh redwood sequoia. Nobody was worried. They were inside this thing. It's a gift shop. You could, there are images of it online. I thought it was very interesting. But there's very little, the whole center was hollow. And and there were people in there. I mean, it was just the that doesn't. Really concerning.
What would be left after your massive?
Well, just as Doug mentioned earlier, just really the central portion. And so uh. We'd be waiting probably a full year for it to to look nice, you know, it right now it's gonna have just that. That means then because as Doug pointed out, there's substantial amounts of the tree that have that have uh. Decayed to the point that they're they're a hazard, you know, I I acknowledge that, that it's dangerous.
So I guess that's what I'm getting to is we would be left with a cylinder for all intents and purposes and Willow being the fast growing kind of. It it's it's a very tenacious tree that then we'd be looking for new sprouts.
Yeah, and again, that would take, no, there, no, you'd be left with. You know, you'd certainly be left with everything in that in that central leader, we'll call it. Um, you'd be left with that, but we'd be looking for much more additional foliage in the subsequent years, you know.
Two years, whatever, get there. Okay, I I'm I'm done. I'm gonna defer to the Doug and the rest of the.
Well, and again, I I totally, we're friends, you know, I I'm not here to be critical. I was, I just love the tree. I was encouraged by friends. And and certainly Doug Doug's, he does two jobs, you know, if not more. So. For me to, I'm not being critical at all. And and as I say, I like working with them. I. I'm sure we'll be doing a lot of things together with regards to trees. So it's, it's not like me to. Criticize this decision because if I were in his shoes. The what's there to gain? He knows that if that tree is cut down, his risk goes to zero. People probably aren't gonna say. That's so wonderful. You save that tree, but they sure are gonna criticize him if something goes wrong. We know nationally, you know, probably about, I think it's a hundred and change, people in the fifty states lose their lives by a tree. Uh, most of them are in the process of cutting a tree. So, you know, statistically, it's it's slim. I mean, we've got a population of. Three hundred and fifteen plus million. We've got two hundred billion of the bee trees, you know, so it's. We know statistically, but there's always that chance, you know.
Well, we went through the same thing when we cut down the trees for the bulb, uh, open space. And that was, I think, a very emotional issue. To your point, we lost a ton in the tornado. But what we're gonna be left with here is a column with some sprouts. And it may sustain a couple, three, four years, five. Aesthetically, it won't be providing shade. But there's a huge emotional attachment to it in the community because if I'm not mistaken, that is a memorial or was planted as a memorial. And I have a feeling where a lot of the feeling is coming up from in the community. It was a memorial tree.
But Aaron McNaughton planted in nineteen seventy four. Um, so yeah, that's that's part of it, you know, I I didn't know him, but a lot of people my age did. You know, so in the course of families up here. But um, when we're evaluating a tree. You know, as I do, like you say, do quite a bit of that in the winter time, but um. You know, we got, we have to remove the emotional component, you know, from it, you know, we're strictly. Strictly looking at safety, you know, and so in pruning this, it wouldn't be for aesthetics. It would strictly be to make it safe, you know, a lot of big portions of that tree would come out. But it would be with the expectation that in time we'd have a beautiful tree rather than Marty mentioned, you know, before you. They really are resilient. They there's few trees that that would. Respond that way as well.
Gao, you got anything else? Gao, I appreciate. What you just got done communicating cuz in all reality, the decision. Has to revolve around the safety aspect, not the cosmetic, not the aesthetics. There is the emotional piece of the memorial. That is a large portion of the decision, I guess, on the emotional side. From my thought process, it comes down to liability, risk and the safety. Um, John and I touched on this conversation briefly in the hours that we've met um. This week and last week, I think he put it best. That really comes down to, and Commissioner Moody alluded to it already in the beginning. In the consent agenda is we have something on record indicating the risk and the liability that the city is in. With the decision of leaving that there if an incident did occur. My question to you is with your company, I don't know if you're an L L C. I don't know what type of establishment you have. I know you're an arborist. I know you're bringing a friend in that has a company. Would you then relieve indemnification and would you? Provide professional documented opinion on the potential liability and risk of. Columning that tree out to the point cuz. You might column it out so aggressively where you're gonna actually help assist in the tree deceasing. So to speak, and I have seen that done multiple times, not dogging on your arborist or. His expertise, but I have seen arborists get too aggressive in these situations and the tree fail.
You know, it certainly could. It certainly could fail. I'm I'm merely acting as a volunteer here. So, you know.
Is there any way to relieve? So back to that safety, risk and liability part of the conversation. Is there any way you can help relieve? That risk and liability? Because I understand that you're speaking to it potentially could stay. But really, we need to get out of the potential land. And what are the true ramifications of the tree staying versus the tree leaf?
Yes, so so when I worked for cities, I'm a s- uh, a contract employee. I so I work. I I am employed by like a temp agency and I'm just a short time. I'm just an intro person. You know, so as far as my company, it, you know, I work for others now. I was in business for thirty years, but you know. I'm done with that. I'm just wanna help out as a volunteer hour again, you know, so.
So there would be really no way to relieve that risk or liability?
Not that, not through me, that wouldn't be, you know, a- again, I'm I'm just trying to, trying to help out here, you know.
Okay, I appreciate that. What is the possibility of using that specific site? Um, the trees are gonna be removed using that specific site to plant a seedling cuz from my understanding, it was planted as a memorial for Aaron McNaughton. Skylar McNaughton, a relative of Aaron McNaughton, has done seedlings and actually has offsprings of that tree. So what's the possibility of being able to plant an offspring there at that site?
Oh, I'm I'm sure there'd be no problem with that.
Okay.
You know, he's got a lot of water.
It's got plenty of water. The, you know, the only advantage we have with, you know, an established tree like that is just, just the mass of it and significance, you know. Like this tree I mentioned, that I, the one that the will lasted over a hundred years. It was with some care, with some maintenance, and that's why it lasted so long. But it was like this one. It was almost like a uh. Nautical uh reference point, like a navigational aid, you know, people would see it and 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 that's. That's the benefit that we have, you know. Now, if we wait fifty years, this other seedling will be like that too, but.
Okay. Well, thank you, Gao. Me personally, since you can't remove that risk and liability with, you know, your professional expert opinion. Unfortunately, I can't. I I would, I would support the decision that was made. I will ask my commissioners, though, uh consensus, or maybe we can get in a motion officially tonight. To authorize Doug to work with Skyline McNaughton to have an offspring planted in that location in honoring Aaron McNaughton.
Support.
Bob's spoken.
Perfect. Further discussion, Richard, anyway? Uh, roll call please, Jessica.
Farrell. Moody. Richard. Nemecheck. Motion's carried.
Thank you, Gao. Again, I appreciate.
And uh.
All right, moving on to uh good of the order. Um, I had like eight things I wanted to go through. Just kidding. Um, nothing for good of the order for me. Anyone else have anything?
No, sir.
I do.
Go ahead.
The housing R F P and we got our answers January first. We said we had to have a citizens advisory committee. That committee was formed. It took until. Whatever date it was, three weeks ago, uh, we, Tim and I walked through with them um. And they support, they they chose actually and wanted to speak further with Moxie. Um, I came back to the board and spoke of that and I'm, it was said that. They are an advisory committee only and it's in the hands of this commission. Which is really disappointing to have lost these months. So how do we move? The hu- the housing, North Boyne Housing R F P forward is my question to this group.
I think that's easy. Man sitting right over there.
The uh, so. There was a similar issue with with housing in Elk Rapids. And so when I got on there, it had been also stalemate. They got stale, sitting on the shelf for a couple of years. I pulled it off. I got with, it was Home Stretch, John Simpson's the CEO of Home Stretch. And they were the last man standing, right? There are other other uh companies that is out that out. So what I did is I just really quickly went through a due diligence period where I I I checked. I literally talked to the bankers and met with the the company itself. Did everything I could to be able to present the concise packet to the uh elected body. Let the body that gave me direction on, great, this is all good and what we do. And then we were kind of off to the races on. And there were multiple things that were done at the same time, from surveys to pilot discussions to uh brownfield discussions and all of those things. But it really just started with, and unless you've already done this, if you've completed your due diligence and you know everything you need to do. Then the next thing I just need to do is engage with them and find out. Basically do my homework, catch myself up to speed and then report back.
Me personally, John, I don't feel like we have done our due diligence. I think there's a gap. And I would, I would agree with Moody as far as tasking you with leading this to the next step. Me personally, what I what I envision the next step, and as we all know, I don't speak for the commission. But what I'm envisioning is conversations around. If we're moving, and I think my understanding and viewing the meeting that I missed the last was that this commission. Is okay with moving forward with Woda, I believe. Moxie, sorry, the whatever one was at Brownfield was not the live tech deal. Um, so my perception on. Perception on the next steps is we need to understand brownfield development agreement terms. And build a consensus with the commission from there. So then that's gonna give you a foundation to approach Moxie. And say, here's some of the parameters, purchase price, deed restrictions if they was exist, AMI percentages, so on and so forth. Um, right now, we have not gone through any collective consensus on establishing any of those development terms. Um, so however you would like to establish a consensus, or I hope you establish a consensus. Um, whether you engage through, how how however. The next noon meeting is kind of the expectation. Every noon meeting, this is a topic. Um, the broke housing North Boyne is a rolling topic. So I think that would be the. The way we move forward is get some type of development agreements if the community truly wants to move forward with Moxie.
Uh, to be cl- I just like to be clear on that, on that, as far as his, what he's being. Tasked with, and that is to um develop. A straw man for development terms and conditions in addition to what steps need to be taken to establish a B R A. What are, what are? What are we going to be working with next time? Cuz we as a group haven't nailed down what our our terms and conditions would be. So I'm just curious. What what are, what would be, what would that report look like and what would it contain?
Be a framework.
For?
For next steps, like you said. So Brownfield, first of all, I I do have a relationship with Eagle, with Brownfield, so I can. Speak to them. They're very well aware of different brownfield opportunities around the state. So that would be the first thing. I need to get with Moxie and find out. Where are they in internally on their side? What are their expectations from us? And it's just starting on homework. So I'm really just starting from square one, but I need to talk to people that are currently involved. And then I can bring to you on the twenty fourth some framework ideas and you're telling me this is good. We don't like this. I wanna focus on, you know. We we don't wanna mess with Y tech. What what is Moxie's plan to get grounded? How long are they gonna take? I was told originally it was gonna take two or three years to break down. And the breaking ground issue took me, took me a year and a half to get moving. But I don't have any information to give you, so. The twenty fourth, I I will have some semblance of a framework. And then you guys can then redirect myself, the team. I want information you want moving forward. I I just need to, you just told me pull the trigger and go. So that's what I'm gonna do.
Um, and the other related question is what um, and and do we, do we, do we have need of the advisory report anymore? Because I'm being asked about next steps from them. Cuz the way we left it was we were going to schedule um. Moxie, when I say we, the subcommittee of Ms. Deets, Ms. Rooney, who bothered to go through and read the whole proposal, you and I. Was that they they wanted to basically do what John's doing, which is here, the 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 concept fleshed out.
Yeah, I'm not opposed. I think having John do what he's gonna do, we can even bring that information to them. And have a discussion at that point with them. And maybe there's some good feedback and some edits and draft changes that come from that body. Um, I'm not opposed to it. I've always made myself available, whether it's an official steering committee or your like the. In assemblies to be continued condition like the Marina one right now. Um.
And and to be clear, you know, Tim, the only, you you know, what we're saying he was going, what be in the beginning was. All my my comment last time was the steering committee was to, you know. Look at the proposals, give us a direction. That direction came back to the commission. It was all I said. The 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 that steering committee had no authority to start negotiating Moxie. No.
Marty, I I made it very clear. The 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 next step was simply to schedule an appointment with them. To understand their proposal further, period. They weren't gonna negotiate. It was, it was a consciousness rate. That was all. I was very clear that.
They they have a lot of questions for me and Richard in regards to live tag vouchers and. And so that's where it got to the point where it's like, well, let's, if you guys want, we can have you talk to them. And so that's where it got to the point where it's like, well, let's, if you guys want, we can have you talk to them directly. And so I think that's where Commissioner Richard was.
They also, they wanted to understand the concept, you know, because the day, many of them or various of them had worked with social services. They want to understand the the. More about the proposal itself and how many floors, I'm gonna do this and that, you know, whatever. It was, yeah. I think it was misleading.
Okay, well, here's what was asking the city manager.
Anything else? Alrighty, I am to move on to announcements. Uh, one of the official announcements we have in our package here is the next regular city commission. June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at twelve P M. The only other announcement I'm gonna make is Friday, June thirteenth from four P M to eight P M. There's the hazardous waste uh event going on in Charlotte County. Um, and that's also going on. In addition to the Friday, June thirteenth, also Saturday, June fourteenth from nine A M to one P M. Um, that's all I got for announcements. Anyone else have anything? I'll make a motion for your dream. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay.
All right.